Time being six o'clock, would everyone turn your microphones on please? And we will rise for the pluggable agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds. A roll call please.
Go. Carrie.
Yes.
Dan.
Here.
Dom.
Here.
Sherry.
Here. Item number three, would any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
What did you say? I have none.
I don't have anything, Sherry.
Thank you, I do not either. Item number four is approval of agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Yes.
I'd like to add a discussion on positions. We had a couple vacancies come up and I take it's the PRD diligence to just review those and see if there's some consolidation. And I don't think we should vote on it, but I think a discussion is wanted.
So, the two positions, I just want to clarify, there's an opening in the equalization office in our conservation. So, I would propose that we discuss conservation as item 24A. And we go ahead and discuss the equalization during number eight, which is the equalization report. There was an equalization vote here. Would that be fine?
Yeah, I need a motion also to make.
All right, I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. And the amendments being in item eight, we will discuss staffing as well. And item 24A is added to discuss conservation staffing. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Agenda, amended agenda is approved. At this time, would anyone care to make a public comment? There being none, I will close public comment. Moving on to item number five, approval of minutes from October 6th of 2020. And I will recuse myself from this meeting because I missed the majority of it. Are there any changes that are needed to the minutes for October 6th of 2020?
Move approval.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 6th, 2020 for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. We will now review October 12th, 2020 minutes. Are there any changes to the October 12th, 2020 minutes?
Move. Move.
Motion by Healy and second by Clemish to approve the October 12th meeting minutes for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Minutes are approved. Item number six, we'll start with the claims. So I did want to make note, in the ambulance section, there was a payment to Motorola, which was larger than normal, that is for three radios. And those are covered by a grant. So we have to pay for them here and we will be reimbursed for three radios. The B and L Communications covers 10 new pagers. Our ages are old and as they break, it's getting harder to get parts for them. And then there was a payment to Vera for essentially fit testing for N95 mass. And that is being covered by the CARESAP dollars. So those are some unusual ones on the ambulance I did want to mention. Any other questions about claims?
On page four, there's a item for $8,142.15.
Is that from the sheriff? Is that from the sheriff?
No, it says, it says Fox Harmelink Law Office. Are we on the wrong page or?
Court on Fox and Youngburg.
Yeah, it says Wanda Fox and Harmelink.
It's a court appointed attorney.
It's a court appointed.
Did you hear that? Patty had indicated that's a court appointed attorney through the court system.
Oh, okay. And then there's also another one on page 22, the $6,853.85. Is that a court appointed attorney too?
I'm going to get to that page, just a second.
Okay. Just curious.
What page is that here?
He said 22.
Page 22, it says Fox Harmelink Law Office, $6,853.85.
I've got $540 on page 22, Gary.
Oh, 23.
Oh, 23.
So that'll be a mental illness board.
Oh, yeah, illness board.
Yeah, so that would be adhering to that.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on the claims before I entertain a motion to approve?
Share, just saying, no, that, those are actually Fox and Youngburg claims. So that would be Dan Fox and Lucy Denver.
Okay.
And that, they are the public dependents for the time.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Gary?
Yeah, yeah, I sure did. That's, that's her ex-husband, yeah, sure.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, you have a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero, claims are approved. All right, next item under number six is the auditor treasure report and pool cash report. So the pool cash is printed in front of you and the auditor treasurer is in your packet. If there are no questions or changes on those, I'd approve a motion.
Move. Okay.
Man, I'm struggling, I would entertain a motion. Wow, I have a motion and a second, I'll get it here pretty soon. I have a motion and a second to approve the auditor treasurer report, pool cash report for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries, those reports are approved by zero. Mental illness quarterly reports. I have a motion and a second to approve the mental illness quarterly reports for the discussion.
Just like you say at the state convention, Don and I attended that, what was it? Little schooling on mental illness reports. And I think Lucy Lovinow's doing a great job. So a lot of the other counties were saying that they're, and being, but it's just.
Good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Mental illness reports approved. Welfare quarterly report.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the welfare quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number seven is the nurse quarterly report.
They usually are.
They usually are.
She told me yes.
I could call Angela, I suppose she'd work.
Oh, 620? Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do the equalization report now? And by that time, I'm sure she'll be done here. So let's go ahead to item number eight, equalization report, Lori Mackey.
Good evening. There should be one of the mays somewhere, a little. Perfect, Matt, thank you for pushing that part. Good evening. I just wanted to get you guys up to date. At last meeting, Matt was up here and explained to you how we were going to implement an assessment plan this fall to get our permit work done. And I'm here reporting that that is going quite well. Jeff has been going out, first week, we did the phone calling and the mailings. And we had to look up a lot of numbers from various sources, but we got that accomplished. And a lot of phone calling in the office. The phone calling does take longer to get all that information than actually walking through a whole house. Just a lot more time consuming. But we'll get there. We've got over 1,000 building permits to process and that's the same number that we have about every year. Jeff has been going out physically to view the properties after they give permission. And he's been well received. He's also had a few close calls before he made phone calls before he went out. And actually visited with several families who were home in quarantine. So he's been lucky when he's, you know, out, he hasn't been exposed yet to our knowledge, so all's well there. Another issue thing that we have is I've been fortunate to have the same staff and equalization for over 10 years. But it's said that all good things must come to an end. And I'm here to let you know that Nancy Brownmuller will be retiring at the end of this year after having worked for Yankton County for over 25 years. She started November 27th, 1995. She's been an integral part of the equalization and has seen it evolve and change in all the work processes and products. Nancy's dedicated to her work, she's a true professional, and she'll be taking with her a great deal of institutional knowledge. We've all had pleasure working with her and she will truly be missed. So as a result, we've got an open position and per the Yankton County handbook, section 804, I will be posting the job opening on the county website as well as the Yankton Job Service. We've done an evaluation of her job duties. And in the interim, before we can get somebody in, the critical items will be handled by the existing staff. The other responsibilities are just going to have to wait because, you know, this is a very busy time of year for us with the permits and valuing all the properties and posting values and such. But there's never a good time to see a good employee go. But she's been good and we wish her well.
Thank you. Ben, did you want to discuss anything?
Yeah, I know you have an employee that's leaving and I think this might be a good time if we just maybe look at that position. I know there had been some talk about another assessor. I would want if that position, you know, could do some assessing as well. You know your department better than all of us, but I agree with that. That's the reason is that, you know, see if that position is going to change now, it'll be time to do it before we hire somebody else. It's just my thought. What's, what's her official job title?
She's a sales Rachel clerk.
Okay.
She handles all the transfers that come through each year with about 1,000 transfers that come through the office. Not every transfer is a good sale. It's all those criteria, but it's still a lot of paperwork that needs to be done and processed for the department revenue.
You know, like we did with zoning and planning, you kind of moved that position from a secretarial position to, you know, more, you know, more paid, but more responsibility. It seems like every job now, especially in the county, we're putting more and more on people. And if they're, they have large responsibilities, they should be considered for that. So that's just my thought before we go and hire somebody else. I don't think, Sherry, either the VA's, I mean, maybe it would just be a good idea to review that to see if that job description still matches with that. Should be, my guess is she's.
Well, isn't that part of our alternative HRD process is that we will be reviewing all the job descriptions coming up? I guess I would rather wait until everybody's doing this than just, you know, doing this right now. I do have it in my budget for the clerk position. And even though we, we do shuffle duties around, but right now I wasn't prepared to hire a new praiser right off the bat just because I wouldn't have that in my budget for this year.
So would you share some statistics, compare your office to some of the similar counties?
Sure. Let's see. So we have six full-time employees in our office. Davidson County has six full-time employees for 12,000 parcels. And just for comparison, we have 14,900 parcels. Covington County has eight full-time employees for 17,000 parcels. And neither of those counties are responsible for GIS. Brookings County has seven full-time employees for 17,500 parcels and an additional two full-time employees just for GIS. If you break that down to man hours per parcel, Bon Home County dedicates 1.07 man hours to each parcel. Brookings does 8.83 man hours per parcel. Covington County is 0.96 man hours per parcel. 1.04 man hours per parcel for Davidson County. So they're spending more time than it would be these other examples, other than Bon Home, I guess was the highest at 1.07. In comparison, Yankton is devoting 0.73 man hours per parcel. That's just a statistic that shows our efficiency in our office. Over the past 10, 12 years, we've implemented a lot of technology and new processes. We've reviewed everything that we do, you know, if, if, if we're doing something over and over and somebody says why, we've got to dive into it and review the whole thing and usually end up revamping the process. So we're always looking to improve. So basically, we're doing 30% more per staff member than Davidson County. 32% more per staff member than Bon Home County. And 24% more staff member than Covington County. In our office, we also maintain the GIS and at the Beacon website with all the subscriptions. So I think that our efficiency, our efficiency is based off the staff that we have. Granted, we're losing Nancy, she's got a lot of institutional knowledge. And whoever comes in new, even if they're a trained person from another county or something. Knowing Yankton County, there's, there's an advantage to that. And knowing some of the history, the names, you know, different things that go on in the county that makes things flow a little easier, makes things click in your head and say, that doesn't look quite right, and look into that. So I would be reluctant to reduce our staff at this time. There are standards for the amount of staffing that we have to meet. We're members of the South Dakota Association of Assessing Officers, known shortly as SDAAO. Our association requires us to affiliate with IWA, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers. IWA has standards that we are required to meet them. Within those standards, there's a formula for staffing, which we completed and were audited on every year by the Department of Revenue. We are bumping up, you know, to adding another praiser. But before we do that, I think we would like to evaluate all of our job duties. See where we can shift or move to make things more efficient, to see whether it's needed right now or not. We may need one, but I would prefer to do the study first of all the job descriptions before we get to that claim.
Matt, have some other statistics? Did you have anything else to share?
Just that Andrea right now is a fieldman. She does go out with a bracer, she is taking classes. So I think the ultimate goal for our office is not, is to become as efficient as we possibly can with the same amount of people. And I think that it started years ago when they started letting us get a camera system because of Beacon and all the other, you know, the tablets and all that stuff. I mean, it is definitely making us more efficient. When I first started, 10 years of, we were doing something like 300 and some reviews with three bracers. We're doing well over 1,002, we're doing 500, 600 in a two and a half month period. I would, I mean, I think we're in almost agreement that we'd like to keep it at six, but maybe just shift some of the duties. And Nancy didn't do a lot, I think it's hard to put all that on one new person, they're going to be a little overwhelmed.
So and to tee off what Lori said during the commissioner updates, I'm going to mention the salary matrix. And part of that whole step process is to have every department leader review their job descriptions. To tie in so that we can start doing real evaluations and make sure folks are aligned with what we're expecting them to do, so.
Yeah, for some job descriptions, talk about what is.
They're a little outdated.
Is there any, or the IAA or South Dakota law, is there any requirement per, you have to have so many people per parcel? I've heard that said, but I don't know what that is.
It's not in state law, it's in our IWA requirements that if we get audited.
And we're, we're in compliance with that now? So what is that, how many, how many employees?
I'll give you a formula. You got the formula handy, right? You got the formula handy?
You know, and I, I guess my concern is if we know we're going to be adding somebody in the future, if we hire somebody, hopefully this person can develop into that role rather than saying, you know, no, I'm secretary, before they brought this is all. If we're going to move this position to something else now, we can.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. I feel that it's going to depend on the applicant. And we also have the opportunity of Andrea's interested to become certified. It's going to depend on, maybe because we might get somebody that doesn't want to go off, but they're going to dig right out of the can. So we've got to kind of wait and see. Our, our goal is exactly where you're at, is we want to try doing what we have.
Yeah, I don't talk to you guys or leave, it sounds like you guys are going to come and say.
All right, so the formula here, I almost had it memorized. Oh, here it is. Staffing formula is S equals P divided by R times T. So your S is the number of staff positions needed. P is the number of parcels. R is the rate, the production rate. And T is the time available or required.
So your, if there, your X would be the one that you're looking to solve.
So where are we at?
We're at six, six people for 14,900 parcels. We gain anywhere between 100 to 150 parcels each year due to platting and new subdivisions going in and splits. So it slowly creeps up. And that's why they told us, you know, we're right at that level, but our efficiencies allow us to be able to get it done so far. It may change.
In smaller jurisdictions, this is right on the book. In smaller jurisdictions, the workload averages between 1500 and 1700 parcels per employee. Larger jurisdictions is around 3,000. Medium is about 25,000. And the reason for, you know, it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense in the larger jurisdictions for a lot of stuff is when you start adding more staff. It's not necessarily one for one.
Do you have any other questions, Ben, regarding that? Thank you, sure, thank you. Appreciate it. Who go back to the nurse, go ahead and come on up. How are you this evening?
Good evening. Presenting a quarterly report for July, August, September. You have any question on that?
Is it, I don't know how things going?
We're busy. We're primarily doing COVID case, COVID-19 case investigations, that's what I've been doing since April. And really office management side. We're adding food clinics this month. And planning for COVID-19 vaccination coming up, so. Connecting that out yet. But there's lots of current flash installations depending on that. Because the pot might be tied up with that too, so. It's all job security. That's a good thing.
Have you been having, have you had a flu vaccine yet?
I did one last week. It took a little bit more time because of distancing and precautions. We're doing another one this Thursday for state employee and county. We added one next week to a larger one, although we don't have any people signed up, so we need to do some encouragement. And we've had some people that of course can't make it to those clinics, so we're trying to accommodate them in the office. That takes some juggling to do that between calling people, everything else. So we're just trying to make the best of it.
With appointments and immunization and things.
Jim started picking up a couple days a week in July. She's been doing that for Covington. Appoints, Winstone has a labor and face for physical presence for appointments. And so we're primarily doing those by phone. And other offices, I was just saying, I know a lot of offices have dieticians that are not doing COVID case investigations for Department of Health. And so they're supporting our office right now. But it's nice having Jim doing services from our office because she knows our area, our resources. So and then this week, we talked about how we can start bringing families in to vaccinate for the flu right now. Because usually we would catch those kids with those book appointments when they come to our office. Or at least catch them for some other avenues. So we're calling, we're looking at past schedules and calling those families and then offering also when you're scheduling your appointments. We're looking at that and trying to at least steer onto some of the free food clinics that are happening right now in town. We want everybody to get their flu shots this year so we can avoid a spike in flu. I don't have stickers today.
I didn't, I got mine up.
Questions on flu or COVID-19? 211 is providing the full resources so if people are struggling in our community, they need to know where to go get tested. Of course, we don't have just the show that the test sites for COVID-19. We want to call ahead of time to the providers. If they don't have a provider, please call 211, they can help. If they're struggling with finances because of COVID-19. If they are struggling emotionally, please call 211. That's a word for any people too when we're on the phone. We do have resources out there, just CARESAP money available.
Andrew, do you want a motion on this? I don't, I don't think we give about equalization.
Well, she, yeah, equalization didn't really have a report per se officially. She was just giving an update, so, yeah, but on this one, Ben, you're right, absolutely, we'll need a motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the nurse quarterly. I have a motion and a second to approve the nurse quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Report approved. Thanks for making the time to stop by. Mr. Hunhoff, you are in the number nine spot tonight.
Okay. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. When I was here three months ago, we said we had a good second quarter and we did. But third quarter was even better, maybe the best quarter we ever had. I was comparing it to the third quarter from last year, quite a bit better than them too, which was also a good quarter. We're on track for perhaps another record revenue year. Some of the things that are up, for instance, mortgages during this quarter, we had 383. The last third quarter of last year was 241. Satisfaction or loan paid offs. We had 376 this quarter and 234 a year ago this quarter.
That's great, especially with the financials.
Some of that's due to, again, I mentioned last time, I think the low interest rates, like people pay up their whole loan. So that's driving, you know, some of those numbers for sure. Coffee revenue, third quarter last year, we averaged 3,900 a month. This quarter, we averaged 5,112 a month. Transfer fees are up. We averaged 12,000 a month in transfer fees this quarter, 10,700 a month last year this quarter. Total fees collected, 33,700 a month this quarter, 101,260 total. Last quarter was 28,307 a month, which is really good. As you can see, we're ahead of that by 5,000 bucks a month, 15,000. So total real estate sold, again, the third quarter last year was pretty good. We had 32 million in real estate value sold. But this, uh, this year we had 36 million in this quarter, 12 million a month. Everything's looking good. Hopefully, I think October 1st through 20th has been real good. So hopefully that's an indicator for the rest of the year.
Did you fill your open position?
Well, you know, that's a very hard time position. Yeah, I think we're going to wait until maybe January. We were talking about it and we think we can get by. It is nice to have it, especially when somebody's missing. You know, they did have two people. I guess we have most of our vacation stuff done for the year. So we're planning on looking to fill that in January.
Any other questions on the ROD report? I would entertain a motion.
Who approves?
I have a motion and a second to approve the register of deeds quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Brian, hey, this is Gary Swenson. Thank, thank you so much for what you do.
You got it. Thank you.
All right, item number 10. Sheriff, welcome.
Good evening. Well, as the register of deeds revenue is up, I can't say anything. Maybe you've got the three months worth of reports from you, I guess. For as far as sheriff's fees, it's about what it looks like. It stays pretty much static as far as, you know, money's coming in at about $600,000 down. It's all COVID related.
So I did, I was curious. I figured we were taking a pretty hard hit on this. 2018, just for the bullets benefit, the total income that you report here at the end of 2018 was 1,949,000. At the end of 2019, it was 1,626,000. Part of that was because of the work done on the women's jail. And I assumed about 65,000 per month for the last three months, which will only put us at about 930,000. I may have over and underestimated that, but that gives everybody an idea. We're about a million dollars short of normal by the end of the year. So COVID has certainly taken a toll and, and we cannot use any of our CARES Act money to replace the lost revenue. So we, we can beg O'Leary on that one, but I know that's a big debt note.
I think this is an eye opener. You know, auditorship, you never rely on that funding.
Yeah, this is a great example of why. Or probably 9% for a million dollars.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But yeah, it'd be nice.
It just shows the toll that COVID has taken on every faction of our county.
Sheriff, at the last meeting, we approved with a, yeah, it's a, I believe, was the air purifier system.
Should be. And just to, we have another, another vendor commission, April. I've been in contact with the state office. They did a really, really picky. They've approved a couple. Now they want, you know, the second spot maybe. Yeah, I wish we would provide a lot of people that are able to do that. But we're kind of on a tight crunch. We want to get it under there. Have to install before we get in. So they're safe to do it. First, I'm going to send it to the state in pre-approval. And I think the commission approved it be done no matter what. It's COVID money or not, but we'll go this route.
Weren't the regulations COVID?
Yeah, yeah. And, and they are really picky. They'll only pay part. I said, well, what if the system's all connected? Right? All of it.
Yeah, I thought, and I discussed it with them, but they haven't had a vision. Keep that place as healthy as we can and it just helps some.
They were attacking me Thursday.
So they did, they did make it clear that this building would not be covered by CARES Act. It, it is just the jail. So highway building, EMS building, those are not covered. So those would be out of the.
They're only covering areas where people can escape.
So I guess you guys can all escape here, but.
This room should be mine.
Yeah, that would be mine because I'm a resident. You know, I think that probably. At least, you know, you know, certain, you know, things like that.
Any other questions on the sheriff's quarterly report? I would entertain a motion.
Who approves?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the sheriff's quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. It's fun to say appreciate you doing a good job. Keep listening to everybody in there so far.
Yes. All right, item 11, just in time. Oh, come on up, man.
We're wandering back and forth.
Oh, please. Welcome. In time.
You know, we were mentioning earlier, COVID has really kind of taken a toll on a lot of different things in the county and veteran service offices, no stranger to that of, um, either. Um, the last three months compared to last year. In July, we had 164 contacts. July of this year, we had 152. In August, we had 150. Last year, we had 167. Uh, in September, this year we have 141. Last year, we had 173. And this coming month, October, it's going to be a real dip for us because last year we were busier. I want like a man that can't get, you know, get 231 contacts in, uh, in 2019. And I'm, if we get, if we get 131, I can probably fly. So the contacts are down. Drivers are down a bit on the, on the DAB van. Uh, we are still getting veterans up there for their, their appointments. And, uh, and that's kind of dicey too because all, every one of my drivers except for one is above age 60. And so they're, you know, at risk by being a driver with this COVID going around and God bless them for helping us out, helping our best out. On the federal end of this, this post, um, I don't think we're going to see the, the president coming in for compensation that we did last year. I have, I have claims that are, are a year old and it's very frustrating trying to help these guys. And some of them are, are, you know, Vietnam vet guys that, that are starting to really need some help because they're, you know, on the other side of 65 and, uh, you know, just get to the point where we're not as tough as we used to be. Last, you know, 65, 75, 80 years old, a few older than that. And the length they can settle these claims with the DA is just frustrated. So, uh, but other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to give you some insight.
Mike, this is Gary.
Yeah.
How many, how many veterans do we have in Yankton County right now? About?
About 1589.
1589. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, I attended the Richard Shield Memorial Service and Sergeant Allen profession. I think Mr. deserves thank you and appreciation for doing what he did and setting it up. And also the bounce speaker Jeff and the crew. The place looked amazing. Everybody was pissed, right? Best. And, and I just want to appreciate what he did and what words you said. And most importantly, the songs he was singing were really good. And so I would just like to say thank you. That service meant so much to the people that were there and to the families of the guys we lost and, uh, the rest of the crew there.
Yeah, Justin, it must be Justin, Nate, Brad, Scott, in the band job. And making it, making it second span, being, being parade ground material. It was perfect that I talked to the, you know, we were there and the DA and sending it up. Thank you.
Well, no other comments. I approve, entertain a motion to approve the veterans report. I have a motion and a second to approve the veterans report for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Report is approved five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next item on the agenda is a request to renew a county franchise. We're about five minutes ahead, but I don't think this is a hearing. So Brad Chardin, is that right?
Yep, that's correct. Brad Chardine.
Chardine, I'm sorry.
No, you did good.
Did you want to go ahead and speak now, Mr. Chardine?
Yeah, if you, if you'd like me to go ahead and make a few comments now, I can get started with that.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
All right. I think John McDonald had worked with Valley and your group there. So thanks for coordinating this franchise request and agreement. Um, I'm the general manager at Southeastern Electric Cooperative. Um, I'm in Marion, South Dakota. We have our main counties of Union County, Lincoln County, Turner County, Hutchinson and McCook County. And then we serve some areas outside of those counties. Um, I believe on six other counties in addition to our main counties. And Yankton County happens to be one of them. So thanks for taking some time tonight to allow us to visit with you about continuing our franchise agreements that we've had, I think probably dating back till, um, when some of our first services were put in there back in late 40s, early 50s. And, uh, we've worked with Yankton County and all of our other counties to file the permits, provide the information that's necessary and to work with you to make sure we have everything restored back to, um, normal and when we're doing our construction worker activities there. We provided you, uh, I think maybe all a piece of material that gives you just some general data on Southeastern Electric Cooperative, who we are. I'm not going to go through that. We just wanted to make sure that you knew who we are, our six office locations, and then the various counties that we serve in. We have currently, um, we have 83 electric services that we provide service in Yankton County. Uh, most of those are down what I call in the Irene area. And I think we also provided you a map of those items as well, uh, to give you a little feeling for where we're at in that, uh, what I would call the northeast corner of Yankton County. We work also with our local cooperatives or other utilities in those service areas. Um, those areas were defined by the Public Utilities Commission back in 1976. And if we cannot provide service there or it's more economical for another electric cooperative, an IOU or a municipal utility to provide service, most generally we swap those services out and, uh, allow the one that has facilities closest to where service is needed to be able to provide those, uh, that electric service to them. So where we're at, we provided a resolution to you as the Yankton County Commissioners and the Yankton County staff to be able to renew our, are asking to renew our franchise agreement. And work with the counties to file the permits and necessary items whenever we're doing line extensions, line upgrades, line repairs, line rema- maintenance that requires filing permits with you as the counties or working with our towns and townships to get the electric service where we need it, get it updated, repaired or replaced as a whole. I think that generally covers the items that, that I wanted to cover with you here tonight. And I guess I would just ask if there's any questions on Southeastern Electric Cooperative, the areas that we serve, that we provided you the map on, or anything of that nature.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions on, on Southeast Electric. I just was curious. This is for 20 years. Is that what the last previous one was for?
Yeah. Um, and that's a maximum that I, from what I understand through our legal counsel, that's a maximum that a, that a utility can, can apply for and a maximum that's allowable according to state law.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you see anything in here? It's pretty standard.
Yeah. Well, there are no further, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the, um, the resolution, the resolution, I guess. The Brian Kelly franchise resolution. With Southeast Electric.
So I have a motion to approve the resolution with Southeast Electric Cooperative for their franchise to operate in our county for the next 20 years. Further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote on this one. Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes. Yes.
I'm.
Yes.
Jerry. Yes, so motion passes five zero, resolution has been approved. Thank you so much for spending the time with us tonight.
You bet, thank you, and good job with coordinate your virtual meetings with Zoom and provide notice for your staff and whoever does that. That, that is very much appreciated, thank you very much, and thanks for the franchise agreement.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
You have a nice work.
We have a second reading of an ordinance scheduled for seven, which we should wait until seven on. And the next is an adjustment is, so is it all right if we go to sixteen and go through the plats at this time? Mr. Better, John mine with you? So let's, let's skip forward to item number sixteen, which would be the Sundance Development Plant.
We have a bunch of plats tonight to go through, first one being Sundance Ridge, a plot of lot seventeen of Sundance Ridge, located in the west half of section twelve, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Sundance Development Plant, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero, plat is approved. Next item is number seventeen, this is a Bob Law preliminary plat. Go ahead and read.
Yeah, this is a preliminary plat of lots one through ten of block four, lots one and two of block five, and lots one through twelve of block six, law overlooked subdivision in the southeast quarter of section seven and in the northeast quarter of section eighteen, all in township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west, in Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Mr. Laws in attendance, if there's any other questions.
I'll move approval of the plat.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve a preliminary plat for Bob Law Inc., further discussion.
I suppose, is there an issue, Bob, on access to these lots from the highway, the state highway?
I got it all okay with the state, I gotta do certain things and I will get that done.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
You'll see on the plat that, yeah, there is amendment made on the inside of the highway that they required an access easement.
If there are no further questions, are we ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Item number eighteen is also for Bob Law.
Plat lot two of block five, law overlooked subdivision in southeast quarter of section seven and in the northeast quarter of section eighteen, all in township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lot two plat for Bob Law Inc., further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero, plat is approved. Item number nineteen, John Harper.
A plat of lot seventeen and Gavin Sculch, located in Engen, tract fourteen, section fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Gavin Sculch plat for lot seventeen for John Harper, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero. Item number twenty, also for John Harper.
Plat of lot four, located in Engen, tract thirteen, in section fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat for John Harper, Engen, tract thirteen, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero, plat is approved. Item twenty-one, Dennis and Carol Dermier, is that correct? Dermeyer.
Plat of lots four fifty-six and sixty-seven, six seventy-eight, block one, Marina Del, two subdivision in the north half, in the northwest quarter of section seventeen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the Fifth, Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton, South Dakota. This being a replat of lots four, five, six, eight, and the previous replat of lot seven and block one, Marina Del, two subdivision, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Boo, approval, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Dermeyer plat, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero, plat is approved.
So we will wait about two and a half minutes till seven o'clock, and then we will have the second reading
for ordinance twenty dash twenty-six, so I guess I have time to sign. I'll be right. Item number thirteen, time being seven o'clock, Doug Marquardt, second reading of ordinance twenty dash twenty-six. Go ahead.
As stated, this is second reading for an application made by Doug Marquardt for the purpose of rezoning the following property from article twelve, rural transitional district, article ten, commercial district. Said property is described as Jodyan's Edition, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S seventeen, page six, in lot one, and the north one hundred feet of lots two, in the northeast quarter, southeast quarter, section, in section twenty-four, township ninety-four north, range fifty-six west of the Fifth Principal Meridian, thereafter referred to as Utica North Township, county of Yankton, state of South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S eight, page one twenty-three, E nine one one, address being three zero six five three, US Highway eighty-one, Yankton, South Dakota.
All right. So at this time, we'll take public comment, and anyone has a public comment to make. All right, there being no public comment, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Was there any public comment at the planning commission?
I don't recall any, it's been several months, but no, I don't believe there was any or or against.
Right.
And he's, he's, once this is done, he's going to come in and give a petition for the, the, because I'm just.
Well, for what else is current, its current use.
So during the planning commission meeting, did you go through the comprehensive plan? Because there aren't any notes here on the conclusions on that discussion.
Remember what you talked into her. One discussed, but it's essentially the permitted or the truck term rule, is not permitted or CP in the real thing. Yeah, looking to come into compliance, we did talk about the comprehensive plan and overall area involved, I guess, and really all things to be looked at. But it does kind of fit in what's developed there.
So it is currently rural transitional, which means at some point, it will change zone. And we're changing it to a commercial. And under the commercial in our comprehensive plan, locate commercial activities in close proximity to the necessary infrastructure. He's on a state highway, he's essentially right east of a large cattle feedlot, Sailburn. So the idea of, of developing too much residential in this area is pretty minimal. There's a gas station right to the north. So essentially, this is already, we're the most right, commercial area. We just, we just haven't officially rezoned it.
And I, I checked the statement about a comment, there was a waiver, didn't necessarily speak for or against the route of concern and rights in that area. I think it's, I don't know, there's not a whole lot that can be done. And it's not necessarily this operation.
Yeah.
Responsible of it being, it's a state highway, so.
And that's pretty much a truck stop right to the north of it. So as far as reviewing the comprehensive plan, my opinion, changing this from rural transitional to commercial does not conflict with what we have outlined here. We're not taking any land out of its current use or encouraging a commercial growth where it might be a problem in the future. So if specific rules governing, governing land uses, once it's commercial, you can come in and be legal getting a conditional use permit, which is really the goal. So zoning district regulations, I don't know if we need to walk through the commercial zoning district regulations or not. Did you, did you review those at the planning commission as well?
Not, not in detail, I think what actually stemmed this was that he I don't believe anybody realized that the truck term rule was, that's their compliance. What he came forward with was a CP for a truck wash.
Oh, gotcha.
That's when it was discovered, and so.
So he was doing the right thing.
So regarding, you know, the land use and whatnot, that's yet to be broken.
You know, one of them, this is really our first step toward getting some of these zoning corrections in the county. There's some other ones, and so there was a lot of discussion on this, and after this, we have more coming. I guess that something we probably should have done in hindsight twenty twenty, and maybe we could still move. There's actually two parcels in this, and we're rezoning one. And, you know, my thought is, is if the goal is to rezone this whole thing, we should probably look out to Mr. Marquardt to have a rezone that other RT property to commercial at some point, it would just make sense.
Well, and to take that a step further, the gas station that sits there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, there, there was discussion about basically going from the Tabor Road south. But like I said, as far, as long as I've been on the board of the commission, I, I don't remember any of these. You done, and we haven't, this is really the first one, and I think it's a step in the right direction. And so there's been a lot of interest after we, we've done this one. So I think it's a, the right project in the right place, and it's moving, moving to the correct zoning category. You know.
With the gas station, there was discussion of, of reaching out to neighbors or people on that corridor about rezoning. And it kind of opened the can of worms, the thought was to maybe get Mr. Marquardt rezoned, so we're not going to give up our conver- if what it likely needs to be, if commercial is the right thing, if we develop like a light commercial. Our setbacks for the commercial are really, only gives it to heavy manufacturing. And like this gas station would not be fine with block size and setbacks and all that. So it very quickly turned into a, a large traffic.
Gotcha.
How about, how about the renewal, what's that used for?
That's just the product, just for basically their slot, yeah, well, truck wash and then their own, I want to say, they say that. And that, that's one concern, that if, if it is brought forward to a truck wash, and we did look at that, that's probably not going to be, be built to the standard to do a commercial truck wash. It's only equipped and it'll be just fine, but for the records we have, it's, it's correct what it's doing now, but something else that might.
Unless I could kind of take it over with these.
No.
Are there any other questions before we entertain action? I would entertain a motion then.
I'd move approval of the rezon for Mr. Marquardt from rural transitional to commercial.
Second that, my only thing that we could add, that he's going to come in to get a petition for the truck, we want to put that in as a petition. I believe that was me.
I just really would, I don't remember how that exactly was, but.
That was my understanding, was, was it not, Gary, when, I mean, he's going to come in for a petition. My concern is that, is he going to come in for the petition, is for it or not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the details on that, I feel more comfortable leaving it out. You know, we're going to get a binder, we, we issued a material permit for this place.
You know, I understand, but we're trying to do it right, because he, we have something that requires a CP. And he doesn't have a CP, it's really protected him, I think, in the long term.
Right.
And if we, from my. And if we, from my conversation, what I what I remember and I could be wrong, is that he's gonna, the reason he wasn't doing these together is because we said we have to rezon, he didn't come in to see me afterwards, and that's where I feel most comfortable with it.
Yeah.
No, that was, that was for this, because he, he doesn't have the condition use permit for the truck.
I think that's what he was, he wanted to ensure, yeah, what that file uses.
Yeah, yeah, yes. So, so I guess that's, that was my concern, is that we're correcting something that happened in the vicinity.
So I have a motion on the table to approve the application to rezon from rural transitional to commercial. Further discussion on the motion. Roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sure. Yes. Motion passes five to zero, just out of curiosity, is it just three votes we need on this for rezon? Well, it's it's different than a conditional use permit. Rezon is just three. Okay, I'm just curious, I forgot to look. So next on the agenda, item fourteen seven oh five, Just Kidding Farms.
This application was made by Just Kidding Farms LLC for the purpose of rezoning the following property from article seven, moderate density rural residential R two to article six, low density rural residential, said property is described as block seven of Deer Run subdivision in the west half of the southeast quarter, excluding track A and section one township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west to the fifth principal meridian, hereafter referred to as Ziscott South Sub Township, county of Yankton, state of South Dakota, E nine one one, address four three three five four three hundred and tenth street. And the applicant's in attendance if there's any questions for this and for the conditional use stats.
So at this time, I'll ask if there's any public comment on this rezon. There being no interest, I will close public comment.
At the planning commission, it was looked at, you look at the areas around it, the majority of them are zoned R one, this one was zoned R two, it's larger than five acres and one commission property was a, you know, good thing going from, going from one residential class to another residential class, it just seemed appropriate to us, and I don't know if you guys have that on beacon or.
Lots to the west of this lot will remain R two, even though they're all five acres and larger.
And that was another kind of discussion, do we, do we reach out to a kind of a mass rezon to fit that area, there were some actual neighbors and attendants, a couple of them stood up and said that they would be open to, they actually prefer to be R one than R two, kind of the same scenario with Mr. Markport, we didn't want this project and this applicant to be held in the courtesy of people who may want to make decisions and so that's kind of something Mr. Better's looked at, a mass rezon, that it would be extended to to those properties, that they certainly would fit into that category, probably look better than the R two that they are.
The real issue, you know, on this one is that they only have a high requirement and that's not how we're not to, it's above the number one, so that's really the main reason and a lot of these other properties might not ever want to do that.
And if you look at the zoning map, you'll see all around it to the south and there's those parts, a little bit of space in between to the west that is yellow, all those properties are all low density.
Yeah, so when it went out on beacon, right now, that pink block where this lot is located, I estimated at a hundred and sixty-seven acres, and so this lot is about ten percent of that area, but it aligns with its border areas to the west and to the south nicely. So to me, you're not taking away the intended character of the area by changing this to a different district. So essentially, less justification of home status.
And you gotta mention the number of the neighbors who are not considering.
Although the bear, uh, he's been bad.
Rezon from.
I'll second that. So I have a motion in a second to approve the rezon from R two to R one, further discussion. And as far as the comprehensive plan goes, it's resident, it remains residential, I'm just gonna go through, there's there's five highlights in here, encourage new residential construction to locate unplatted lots of record, it's a platted lot of record, restrict premature development of residential areas before proper infrastructure, well, it's already there, so we don't have to worry about the infrastructure. I'm on one thirty-nine, limit rural densities so that current service levels are not exceeded, thereby avoiding the creation of special purpose districts, sanitary water and road districts, et cetera, again, it's all established, we're just changing the district requirements, restrict development in areas where unsold soils, discourage strip development, et cetera, so changing it from one residential to the other and getting it in the neighborhood, I guess I don't see a problem with it conflicting with our comprehensive plan. Any other comments before I ask for a roll call vote? Patty, roll call vote, please.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, so the rezon has been approved five to zero. So now at this time, we will tie in with the conditional use, but we need to go into board of adjustment first, would I, could I have a motion to go into board adjustment?
I might have a motion to go into board of adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go into board of adjustment for the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay, motion carries, we are now in board of adjustment. So time being seven twenty, Just Kidding Farms conditional use permit. Are you the applicant, sir? Would, do you want to come on up and?
Sure.
And tell us a little bit about your application?
Matt Winston or Just Kidding Farms, it's just a small little farm operation, sort of a bottom down.
Are there any questions for Mr. Winston? Was there a limit to how many animal units that?
That we want this, that we want run there, so.
Thirty?
I think it's a hundred, if I remember right, or something.
Oh, gosh.
We're all looking at.
Enough to do it's just.
Business mind did really good.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Goats are fun.
There's a crazy goat lady at home, that's all I can say.
Opposition to a minimum, that property is just in that area at all, so.
Hey. All right, sir, well, go ahead and sit down, I'm gonna ask for a public comment, would anyone care to make a public comment? There being no, no persons who have shown interest, public comment is closed, bring it back to the commission for discussion on the application. Any questions or concerns?
I just want to say, we're too, too far ahead of ourselves, this this will not be contingent upon the rezon, so we just rezoned that property, but it's gotta be published
Okay, yeah.
So we, we can certainly move forward, but I think it, just sort of unaware that that rezon has a week publishing and then twenty days.
What what's your thought on this, Gary?
Yeah, I was saying, are we okay? Or just?
Yeah, you concerned with stipulation on that, correct.
So.
And Gary, that has an easement to use that road to access his house.
Yes, all those properties, that is their access point, near three hundred and tenth street, correct.
My only concern with three hundred and tenth street is those of us who don't know it, it's not a very good road, you know, I think this is a lot different than other uses, you know, it's it's really a conditional use for a use, not for a particular project. And I guess I think that's different, and I don't think that this use is gonna maybe let reflect in that road, but.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, anything we need to cover, it looks like the planning commission adequately answered all of the items around the conditional use permit, ingress egress, parking refuse, et cetera, certainly enough yard space for the number of goats that are going to be requested, so if there are no further comments.
Move approval on the conditional use permit.
Contingent on the rezon. I'll, I'll second that. So I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit contingent on successful rezon. Further discussion, roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Approval. So thank you for coming. At this time, entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
Moved.
I have a motion in a second to go back into regular session for the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay, motion carries, we are now back in regular session and we are down to item number twenty-two.
They had that blue shot thing, so, and I did text Paul and say that we're ahead of schedule, but he hasn't texted me back, so.
All right.
And they're both at that, so.
Yeah, you want to make a motion, please, uh, Jordy, is there a motion?
I made a motion.
I have a motion in a second for a five minute break for the discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries, we are at a five minute break. Uh, let's turn our microphones on here. Don, go ahead and turn your microphone on. So I have a motion and a second to come back into session for the discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries, we're in session again. Just a second here. Yep, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to, somebody could come up here, yeah. He's shy and I'm making him do this, so I just, so what Mr. McDonald did and and you as well, particularly the Mitch Shield, and so now in coverage dedication and veteran more, it looked amazing, it was perfect, he did a lot of great compliments, not only that, I just want to tell you my appreciation for, you know, this job being done, especially in these difficult times with the COVID, and it's one of those jobs that.
It's one of those jobs that people don't think about, but it's absolutely essential. And so if you give them a round of applause and tell them our appreciation for.
I'd like to say something to you too also. This, this is Gary. Our, our veterans memorial has never looked better since you've taken over. And I too was at the dedication along with Dan. Actually for both of them. And, uh, and like he said, the COVID nineteen thing, uh, you've, uh, you've done an exceptional job. The bathrooms look fantastic and the floors and I just want to commend you, but our veterans memorial is what it really, really looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
So since we are a little ahead, we'll wait a little longer for Steve and Paul. Gary Clinton, would you want to go ahead and do item twenty-six, which was the veterans?
Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you.
I guess if, if I was writing a paper, I would have two thesis statements and the first one would be twenty-two veterans commit suicide every day and it's been going on for years and the government doesn't seem to really get on a bandwagon to make it stop. The other thesis statement would be stolen valor. And I'm going to get to those a little bit later. I want to explain to you a little bit. My wife and I, and I met her when I was eighteen years old, but we never got married. We got married to somebody else. Later on, we got married and I guess we were destined to be that way because our families together militarily have served from the Civil War to Iraq and Afghanistan and every war in between. Uh, we've lost, uh, we lost three during Vietnam. Two of my cousins and one of hers, and I was the only one to be able to have a life. My uncle Earl witnessed a flag raising over Iwo Jima along with another relative and his son who served during Vietnam was lost at sea. So life isn't fair. Uh, I'm going to take and pull this back. I'm in my, uh, I'm in my little ex. I don't call it a bunker or anything because I live above the ground. The terrorists only live underground. Can you, uh, can you see this?
Yes.
What you see on the top are the eight veterans from Yankton County who were killed during the Vietnam War. And the first one is David Heavely. That's Doug and Valerie Heavely's older brother. And then down here, there's, uh, Richard Hymus. He was killed in Vietnam. Uh, over here is Stanley John Fring from Mission Hill. He was in an airplane that exploded over the South China Sea and his body was never recovered. Then over here is Harry Coats, uh, Junior. He was killed in action. Uh, his dad was the manager of the Moose Club for years. He had lost one arm, I believe, in World War Two and he only had one arm, his dad did. Dwayne Jansen, uh, he was killed during Vietnam. And then Charles Lane, uh, he's pretty special to me. I hope you can see that, uh, this is in my garage here, but, um, he married, uh, his, his mother became a widow and then she married my neighbor out at the farm by Mission Hill. And I got to be really good friends with her and, and Charles was shot down over North Vietnam. And his plane or his body have never been recovered to this day. Then there's Larry Beesman. He's a relative. He was the one lost at sea. Gary Alvin Larson, he grew up in Viborg. He's a, he's a cousin. And he was killed in sixty-eight in the ten offensive in March, uh, up in the Quavet River by the DMZ. And I don't think I missed any, I don't believe I've missed anybody here yet. Okay. Um, and I just kind of pulled back here a little bit. I couldn't bring all this stuff tonight. And, uh, I, I have all these things about the, the POWs and MIAs and, and this one here is, uh, my, uh, my uncle that witnessed a flag raising over Iwo Jima is sitting on my dad's new tractor and the picture was taken in nineteen forty-six, but we had it colorized, so it wasn't black and white. The uncle in the middle, Clarence, uh, dropped out of the tenth grade when World War Two broke out, joined the Merchant Marines. Then later on, uh, joined the army during the Korean War, came home, took his GI Bill, took his sweetheart, got married and eventually earned his PhD and became a industrial arts teacher out in Elmoza, Colorado. So, uh, you know, you can come from, you can come from nothing and poor. They, all of them lost their mother in nineteen thirty-two during the depression, so they, uh, they had a struggle in life. My other uncle that's not there, he was a principal in Roosevelt High School in Sioux Falls. This is a flag, uh, for the Merchant Marines and we had a really tough time. My wife took, it took a long time to find one because you can find every other kind of flag. These are the four, can you see these four? These are the National Guard. You know, the ones we had the bridge dedication to for shields and Koke Ash here just recently. And then there's also Daniel Chuka and, and Dennis Jensen. And I got those. This picture down here is USS South Dakota coming back from the war in nineteen forty-six, uh, to come underneath the Golden Gate Bridge. And, oh, I got all kinds of stuff and, and, uh, there's another, but I don't want to go into too much, but the thing is I want to get into the, the, um, twenty-two veterans commit suicide every day. Uh, I want everybody to pray for them. That's all I can ever do. I've, I've tried to, I've written letters and I've done articles in this Argus Leader and the Mitchell Paper and even, uh, some, uh, local papers. But doesn't seem to get any traction. Uh, the stolen valor. There's a lot of places now that give veterans a discount. And, and I'm just fortunate to, if you have to go in there sometimes ask for it or sometimes they'll just have it posted. And some, some give ten percent, some fifteen, some twenty-five, and there was even a Long John Silver's in Sioux City we went to one day and they gave us twenty-five percent for the whole family. And I said, you made a mistake. And she said, no. Our owner is a Vietnam vet and he, he gives veterans discounts to the families too. Th- this is an interesting picture here. This is, uh, my mother's side. Uh, these are two pilots from Sioux Falls. They're brother and sister. They're, uh, Jesse and Maria Eckern. And, uh, uh, my mother and their grandfather were first cousins. And their grandfather served in Korea. Uh, and I've actually got a picture of him in a bunker and I've got a picture of these two in a bunker with their airplane over in Iraq. I don't have it here right now, but they served in Iraq and their younger sister, uh, just came back from Afghanistan. She's in Air Force Two. So, uh, the, the stolen valor, um, I don't know what we're going to do. We, if you look it up on, uh, on YouTube, there's all kinds of cases, there's videos of people catching them. People walk in with a hat or a uniform and they try to get a discount. So when I ever, when I go anymore, I just show them my military ID and, and they just give me a discount, but uh, sometimes if I forget, they ask me because they just say that there's just too many people trying to, trying to get a discount at the, at the price of, uh, of all these veterans who've served. About, about one percent of the current population uh, serves in the, in the United States Military Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard. And about seven percent of the total population in the United States has served at one time in the military. So that's, uh, you know, that's a really small percentage and I, and Mike said that we have like fifteen hundred and eighty-nine veterans in Yankton County. And, uh, once a year, uh, and I've been doing this for several years. I think six or seven now, uh, Hy-Vee always has a free breakfast uh, up at, uh, at the Hy-Vee store. And actually all the Hy-Vee stores do it throughout the, the, all the central states here. And the free breakfast for veterans on Veterans Day. And, uh, and I, I usually try to bring some of this, uh, stuff up to the, put it stands, uh, tables up and, and I've got another, uh, eight-foot by four-foot, uh, trailer that I have all the veterans in our family from, but, uh, all I ask is that you pray for all these veterans that commit suicide every day. I don't know, I just, uh, my wife says I'm relentless and I said, well, I'm the only one that can talk about fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine were killed during the Vietnam War. And, and the ironic thing now is that, that sixty thousand, sixty thousand Vietnam veterans have taken their own life since the war was over. That's more than were killed during the war of fifty-eight four seventy-nine. So the suicide problem with Vietnam vets is extremely bad. So anyway, um, I don't really have many more things to show you here, but I, I hope you were able to see some of this stuff and, and, uh, if you want to, uh, call me, talk to me, if you want me to put a display up at a school or something, I'm more than welcome to do it, free of charge. And it's just something that I feel obligated to do as a veteran myself. And, um, because I'm the only one that can speak for, for a lot of these people because they, they can't talk anymore. So, um, just, uh, oh, one more thing. Uh, John, you know, John Thune, uh, said, Senator John Thune said here a few years ago that every day should be Veterans Day. And, uh, every day at the Swenson home is Veterans Day. So, uh, so, uh, thank you, John Thune for staying that and, uh, and, uh, any, anybody got any questions? I hope you were able to hear me.
Yeah, Gary, you heard you really well and you covered it very thoroughly. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's pretty well ingrained in my head. So, uh, anyway, but, uh, thank you so much for allowing me to put this up and, and, um, and pray for peace and, and pray for our nation and pray for our president and all its leaders and that we can get back together again and, and be a country of, of, united. Uh, you, you know, united we stand and divided we fall. So, thank you so much.
All right, Gary. Thank you. All right, Steve. We're a little ahead, but come on up. My friend Michael. Do you have a microphone?
How do we do that?
The base, there should be some, you got it.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, where to start? Well, we have, um, last three months quarter recorded, the whole actually, you know, January through September quarter report there. There for a while, our call line was dropping, um, related to spring, but it's starting to come back up. Although we are still one hundred and fifty calls, I think, were rewarded this time last year. You couldn't tell that by the non-climate, non-count, but, um, we are still a little behind in our call line as well, which is not horrible, Ben. So, um, um, and then I attached a couple new reports to my, to my report, um, from two and C, this nice little, um, colorful one here, kind of, kind of shows what the last, um, three months were as far as we're at call here running, how they were being billed and how much this has been billed out in the last three months. Which is they took over, which is, well, yeah, last month. So how, how is that going? It's going really well. Believe it, it, it's, um, um, it's kind of a slow process in the beginning. Things are starting to pick up now. We're still having some problems with, um, if you look at the agent report back here, we have problems with Blue Cross Blue Shield getting reimbursed by, from them to the result. There was a document that wasn't completed and they got missed, you know, on the transition between us and quit my client with that, cleaning that up. South Dakota Medicaid, they're just really slow right now. So, you know, we have, we're doing that. We're dealing with that. But what's really unique is that the issues that have come up that were, that I have to kind of figure out. I could call and quickly explain and they can take me to their, they'll send to, send my question, send me to their compliance department. And I get a lot of really good information and, and how to work through the individual problem or deal with something. So.
So you're happy?
I'm very happy so far, yes, I am. So, uh, then finally, the next document is just, um, kind of an agent report. For, uh, since they've kind of taken over the accounts. Kind of interesting if, if, if there's something, you know, if you don't want to see this, this, this document, let me know. I put them, there's every kind of report that you want to see. Let me know and I probably, I might be able to pull it together. They have, they send me monthly reports. There's ongoing reports. I'm still trying to figure out where the man still can't get lost sometimes with all the different reports that, that are there and what they actually mean.
So I got a question for you. Like, uh, I'm assuming Blue Cross Blue Shield, okay. Is that Oklahoma or what is that?
Yeah, I would say that would be Oklahoma.
For eighty-two dollars, is that, is that a new bill strip or is that what, what's the pay?
No, no, that's what's supposed to pay. With that, yeah, or there was, um, it was probably, what it, this probably is, and I didn't look into that one, but I was just thinking, guess it's, this is, um, this particular one, this, this Oklahoma one, secondary insurance. And so they, it's gone to Medicare for essential primary insurance. Now there's eighty-two dollars left. Now they have to send it off to, then they have to stop and send it to the secondary insurance, so. But that, I'm sure that's what that is something. Questions? Comments?
No, I like these, um, that, uh, show each entity and how far they're behind. So I think it's eye-opening for, if, if anybody deals with insurance, it's slow. It, it just is.
It's, it's slow. And, and, um, you know, it's ongoing thing you hear from everybody, whether it's FedEx or insurance companies or, you know, trying to get help at, at the store. COVID is just slow and everything that, you know, people are now wanting to come home, you know, that it's hard to, uh, to, I do this part of my job and now you do this part and all this information got to get there. It's not just, you know, me handing it over, so.
So, uh, private payment looks like probably the largest fine item, which I can imagine is. That's one thing that we're hoping to see better reimbursement on. Have we seen that yet, you know, or does?
Back, I think what you want to mean to tell that.
When, when, how long do you need?
I think to see, look, and the difference in the private payments, I don't know what that kind of, that would be. It's probably not one thing, at least a hundred and eighty, before we start seeing something.
What number, how, how far? Was there how many, how many?
Just, uh, three months. Yeah. They started in June, middle of June to now. So, not, not very long. So, and the thing is, is if you look at it, it's the data that we did to crunch and look at is only comes once a month. And I mean, so, I mean, it's trying to figure it out, so.
Please refresh my memory. This company, uh, taking the board and giving it to us?
No, they'll take it as far as they can and they'll, they'll make pay, you know, you make payments, they'll get every bit of the money that they can get. And then when they can't get anymore, then they'll send them back and then we'll send them to credit collections. And we only had one so far. They just sent right back to us. Part of it, I should say that. It worked for a while. Right, that they couldn't give you anything then. And there's good reason and credit collections is probably going to work if we're just a little bit considered back.
And points of pickup, other? For two, front beach, front beach, other points of pickup. What does that include, I guess?
That could include, um, if we just do some oddball little, like, calls. Sometimes it might be that we have responded and we're actually in Hager's district or, you know, in Bon Hall or over towards Vermillion where we're actually in Clay County. Or, uh, I Green is a good one for other. If you think about it, the city of I Green's got so many different little, have, you know, three different counties there. I don't think what would another, other would be. I guess if we go to the, I'm just, uh, yesterday, day before, we went to Vermillion and picked a patient up, which had moved to Sioux Falls, that would be considered an option.
I guess personally, I would like to see if we're going to Vermillion or the other counties. Just so we kind of give a visualization of what we're actually doing. And it wasn't such a big deal when it was wanted to, but now that it's up to thirteen and it seems like it keeps growing. You know, I just think that's, that's good because it gives us a better visualization of what the guys are actually doing. Because a trip to Vermillion or, or wherever is going to take a lot more time. Because a trip to Vermillion, or, or wherever, is gonna take a lot more time now, so if we can, if we can put some of those in there.
Yeah, and some of the others would be, uh, gonna be reflected in the second. Oh, there it is, if you go to the call for page, it says, um, so if you go to this page, Big Street Page, and, and a second line down, it has A R S, and the next one is Intercept. Some of the others are gonna be within that Intercept, because we might be, Intercept being, you know, with, with, uh, Avon, that was gonna be clearly as well, county, we'll make that pick up.
Well, there's always says number of calls, one.
One for the last three months, right, and I can break, I can take that other break down.
I, I would like to see that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, you know, I'd like to see that, because it's really easy to put things in there, you know, maybe we're doing, you know, ten calls to Vermillion, and if that's, is, I, I just wanna know about that, uh, you know, I guess I'd like to see those other calls, you know, we have an oddball, you know, one we do, versus, it's not such a big deal, but continue.
And if I, I gather, if I change, but, you know, when we, it also is, if you go to, um.
It's also that, or, sure. We have an Irene on there now.
Yes, we do, but.
It's all Irene, however, that, they, the medic may put that down, because it's a Clay County call, they put that down as another Clay call.
But, you know what I mean? It depends on how they wanna log it, because of the, because of the way that, uh, that comes up.
I guess I would like to see, and I don't know how the rest, if we're going to Vermillion, or Clay County, or Bon Home, or Hutchinson, I would like to see number of calls that we do there, because it gives us an idea.
I can certainly, I can do one. I can tag that, I can, I can tag that on here, but, point to the secondary page, maybe, I don't know what, I don't know exactly how, presented, but I'll, I'll.
I appreciate that.
Like, if it becomes a regular occurrence, then it just goes into a category, like that, you know, just leave the other ones you choose, it's.
Just the, yeah, oddball kind of stuff.
I mean, I guess the reason for that is, you know, we're, you know, getting to the point, you know, we got, we have ten calls to Volin, and, and eleven to Nebraska, you know, the citizens of Volin, Commissioner Hill, are paying the taxes for the ambulance, and the citizens in Nebraska are not paying for that.
True, however, we let those calls in, except for the, the short, little, south, and, and a lot of them are finding, where they're calling for, was calling for help, to be able, to be able to services call.
Yeah, I, I realize that, we, we gotta help our neighbors, but, you know.
I can try to break that down, you know, you're welcome.
If there are no more questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ambulance quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you, I'm doing a lot of everything, enjoy your weather, maybe Paul covered, how they're doing.
Oh, it went, I think it went really well, but what would Paul cover? Who's his baby?
All right, come on up, Paul, we're right on time again.
Cold weather, right?
Yeah.
No matter, you get a flu shot, or one day fires, you know, they made this whole guy.
All right, I'm here tonight, well, first, just a kind of FYI, uh, the COVID numbers are still climbing, uh, substantially, in my mind, usually, uh, last week, from, yeah, our meeting yesterday, our task force meeting, near the one week ago, we gained eighty-nine more positive cases, so I know it's coming up. We just make sure we're, you know, that everybody wears a mask, uh, when they go out, uh, it protects, you may not feel sick, or whatever, but, I mean, you're protecting the person that you're near. So, there's gonna be a big campaign this week, uh, I'd say, I'm gonna say, slow down, that's never gonna happen, while COVID's going on, but, we're gonna try and get it out this week, the hospital's gotta do push, I see there was a thing from the fifty-one, fifty-one mayor, so I think you're, yesterday, sent out a lot of masks, and all this stuff, so, all right, but down there, and again, our numbers are going up. I'm here tonight to talk about, we've, we've been looking at, uh, you know, like you guys here, with your, your A V equipment, the, the, I know, I see they did make it, but they do cameras, they're doing some different things, over at Emergency Operations Center, we do a lot of our work, we're looking to update the stuff that we have over there, because it is old, uh, the stuff was there before I came there, the amplifier, some of the old TVs. We're not replacing the TVs, but the problem we're running into, the code they gave you, uh, but if they hold the, tie it all together, I'm gonna give you these here, I, my bad, when I sent the stuff over to Valley, I thought I joined the PDFs, I always. This is kind of a, kind of a breaker production, I wanna tie it all together, but that's how. Let's give you a, a little bit of an idea of what we're trying to do, and, and that's just what we're doing, right now, we have four, we have a main computer sitting at the, at the, if you remember the office, under the, at the wall, or at the desk, and there's two screens, and we can take them screens and put them on a TV, so more people can see them. Uh, when we do our, our Skype meetings, or our Zoom meetings, that we're doing more and more of, with, with the COVID nineteen, we're doing the state, with other counties, or anything like that, we have a little camera bar in the ceiling, that's designed to be on top of Alaska, and so, I, I went around and asked several people what they're doing, and can, how we can do this. I called the company out of Sioux Falls, and gave us a call. Again, I apologize, this was supposed to go up in the PDF, uh, and, you know, technology, it's a pretty good better. This is what they quoted us, uh, for the falls, the, 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 what they were gonna do, it's forty-four thousand dollars. I had a gentleman here, Tyler Anderson, I think it's Jim, Don, John Anderson, Chris Schloss, at Berry's point. Don't we forget Don to ask a question about Boy Scout before he, uh, but anyway, they came in, basically, this whole thing, what it's gonna be is, is that they're able to take a, a smart device, and have, and an example, it is like a tablet, and this tablet, you can take this computer, and put it on that TV, and that TV, or take this monitor, and put it on that TV, join the video, Skype it, Zoom it, or, all that kind of stuff, all in one thing, and get rid of all the old, more of that stuff that we have. Uh, and being that we're using it more and more, like I said, with, the stuff that's going up, they price that something of eighteen thousand, or eighteen forty. So my, my, my question to you guys, I would like permission to move ahead with this, using Care's money, to help purchase to put this in there, because we're doing so much down there at the office, in the ULC, and all these devices, and if you want to start, there's a thing called a, like a decoder, or encoder, they're, they're just, like, stuck to the wall, so if we wanted to move to here, and have a big operation, it's portal, we just have to run the line. So it's not a permanent fix, or, well, it's gonna be, I'll probably say, it's gonna be a, 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 but it's something that we could, if we had to. And that was something I looked at, wanted to make sure. This is the high price that he gave us, because he says, depending on how hard it is to run, where it goes to the ceiling, it, it might not take fifty, if I take, you know, fifty feet, set up, he priced two hundred feet. Think of that paper, so he, he thinks it's gonna come down some, but he, I suppose, too, come in, it seemed very, very knowledgeable what they're doing. So, the idea would be, run it against Care's money, purchase it, using, uh, we could either go, you know, one of my accounts, and put the monies back, or, if the Care's goes, or the building fund, or however you wanna do it, uh, and submit it in that map. So, I mean, that, I wanted to come to you guys and ask if that's something that we could do, uh, because we are kind of hiding our time. Questions?
I'm, I'm obviously.
Uh, best given, cares?
Yeah.
Dollars?
That's, that type of technology, Zoom, uh, you know, all them.
Right.
What we have to do to do this, so.
Eight-year-old in the weekly calls, and higher training, and things like that.
Yeah, and that, and that's the other side, it can do so much more than just that, we can, I mean, we're looking at, probably, more of virtual meetings, and things, and virtual trains, for different things, and it will be tied in with Steve's, uh, stuff over there, so like, his monitor on the other side, and we have two training rooms, if he needed to use it, he'd have that capabilities, because he included this stuff in there, I don't think I told him that, but.
Hold him now.
But that's the idea, we're one to know this, I mean, we're one to know this, so there's a way that we can make it all work for everyone.
Well, and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a potential for some of those ICS classes.
Yes.
To go online, and we're the one who hosted, last time we hosted for the, the city police, the city employees, uh, state troopers, I mean, I don't know, a lot of people came there, and the reality is, that's people they train, it's gonna be for, in the future, and, uh, that training is absolutely vital, especially for law enforcement personnel.
And I know that, you know, it's, 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 I'd seem like a lot of money, but, but when it all gets said and done, you'll have, everything will be, I have, I sometimes have our search rescue members say, so how do I get a, a T, computer up on the TV eight, on a normal? I mean, it's, it's, the old system is you gotta push this, and click this, and tick that, kind of thing, and all, this here, just gonna be a touch, and there you go. So, uh, all right, I'm asking about, you have your permission, but have these guys go ahead, and, and, so they're, they're ready to start, I have a, I said, I wanna talk to you.
Any questions for Paul?
Is this, is in here? Is this code?
No.
Or is this something's never?
It's, well, it's kind of in there, it's, it's an example of what the technology can do.
Correct.
The pictures, I mean, that monitor won't be, not gonna be hanging on the wall, or on our desk.
Right, okay.
Or using a different type of device, but this is the technology that is already provided, that they have, or providing. And being that they're local, too, with another, maybe, of added bonus, because they're, you have a problem, and are here to fix it.
So, at this time, if there aren't any questions for Paul, then I would entertain a motion if we feel we want to act on this.
And how, you know, it's, it's a pro, how are we doing on COVID dollars, first, how many, how much do we have?
I don't know the exact, we're working hard, Patty's working on, I've been helping on some other stuff, we're, and we're trying to fight as much as we can, I don't know what order I'd be.
You're gonna ball, are we gonna be under, over?
We're gonna be under.
All right, so if we can get this, did I catch you off?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll, I'll jump in.
If we can, uh, have this paid for, for COVID dollars, I think that helps significantly.
Yeah, and that, that would be the goal, is to get it, and now, if for some reason it doesn't ball by, you had a rent opportunity.
Right, we're looking at, I mean, I actually still looking at other ways of dealing with it.
Yeah, so what's happened with our Care's Act funding, is originally, we were told we could use all of our ambulance salaries, which is big for our county, now, um, previous word we got was we can only use forty percent. That's a significant hit to our county, so we are begging and pleading at the state level, hoping they will revise that percentage up for us, but I doubt they get it to a hundred percent, so, we have, and I'm in the, the technology gym, have discussed about the air filtration, that qualifies for the jail, so we'll use that, and we're gonna try and get it under fifty thousand, so we don't have to bid it. Because if we have to bid things, we won't make December deadline, because of the publications.
We might have to split those up.
I said, I heard it's only the jail, not the courts, not for that.
Yeah, and we won't be doing any of the other buildings in twenty twenty, if we proceed, because that puts us over the fifty thousand, and Patty would get audited on that, so, that's kind of the situation right now.
One of the things I told Jim the other day was, let's see if, he was supposed to talk to you. He?
He did.
Was that, being that there are so many different areas, something like the jail, sheriff's office, police department, can them have done, can they be done as a project? Rather than a, a building, you know what I'm saying, that each project would be less than the twenty-five, or fifty thousand dollar bid, but he was gonna talk to you about it.
And, and I think, the conclusion he came to before I talked to him, is the Care's Act money will only cover the jail itself, no matter what. So, even if we, even if we were able to break it up into projects, at this point, only the jails.
Okay, it's amazing how the Care's coming, starting out, and whatever you guys want, and now it's, it's, and I, and I see a lot of companies that struggling to really use that money now, and that's, it's too bad, because it's not how they're supposed to be.
Yeah. So anyway, we're doing whatever, but the other thing that I wanna do is, and Aaron and I are gonna work on here in the next couple days, or, well, next week. Yes, this, we're gonna put out a request to all the departments, and see what last go run of P P E we need. You know, what do we need for the, I don't know, Jim's got some new guidance, or, or something, he came over and got a bunch of stuff from us, uh, for the jail, so we're gonna be looking, okay, so now, in the next year, or six months, how much you think it's gonna be, uh, we'll, we'll get it for, for pockets together to you, this is what we're gonna buy, so, you know, it might go, that's shocking, huh?
But the project will have hold. And, and P P E is definitely covered, we'll, so, so that, if, if we could find out roughly what we have left, and then just, I keep moving it, that's what you're getting. Do you even set up that point, I mean, that would sound, you know.
I was gonna say, you have a point, you said, but, I think to date, you said eighteen thousand was, would, and we're, we're talking quarter million.
We, we, we have eighteen thousand.
That's what we spent on P T E, and stuff so far.
They also have to explain what it is for, yeah, there's different territories, I have to put that stuff in, and I don't know some of it.
Have we reached out to you?
I've talked to Gene, yes, yeah.
Are you willing, is at the state level, to try to extend this, or what?
We may not, unless it's extended.
I understand, you're after the eighteen, sixteen, or eighteen, but, uh, thirty first at the end, it all goes back to the vet.
Right, yeah.
They're looking at, even the state level, maybe buying everything that they buy.
Yeah, yeah, but, but everything does have to be accounted for, and, and Patty has to jump through hoops, and hoops, and hoops. Just to get things right, it's crazy.
It's almost worse, P A stuff, for.
So.
They make it sound sweet.
Yeah, it's like doing your taxes, I'm sorry, right? So, so at this point, we need, um, if we're gonna act, we need a motion to approve, um, that lower bid, not the forty-four thousand.
Not with this, an FYI.
Yeah.
And so you're either gonna use COVID dollars for this, or, so I'd make a motion to approve the updated technology for the emergency management, so, in the amount of,
State.
An amount of eighteen thousand, no more than eighteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents, that's, thinking on either COVID dollars, or, rent, I think.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second, so I have a motion and a second, uh, not to exceed eighteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents, for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion carries five zero.
Okay, then the last thing I have, and I'm gonna get out of here, is that last week, or last, whenever I was there last time, uh, Don, you asked me about the Boy Scout camp. And I found out, the Boy Scout camp out here is not part of that bankroll. They're a total different, they carry the name of the Boy Scouts, but they are a total different organization, totally structured, different, different board members, so they have no, they're not part of that.
They're not being them a lot.
No, no, they are not. And I got the Barry, and I called, uh, I got a call, Tom, I haven't heard that, he's been lost to fall, but Barry out here, is an absolute, should I told him why? So, but I wanted to make sure, if you want me to follow up on that, I.
Good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul, thank you all, good evening. Paul, what do you want to read with, and I, thank you, by a hundred and. Paul, what do you want to read with that? Thank you for the hundred and fifty.
I wear your long guns.
Well, yeah, heater's so tense. Emergency management.
I know where we're gonna go get our tent for the year camp.
So, uh, next item on the agenda, I'm twenty four, reduce planning commission to seven members, and that is a ten. All right. Um, I put this on the agenda for further discussion in the spring. We had touched on this, um, the possibility of moving to seven. Uh, I put together a little history of how we arrived at the current nine. Um, so in March of twenty seventeen, uh, there was a motion made by the county commission to reduce the planning commission members from thirteen to eleven. Um, and so at that time, we were at eleven. Later in twenty seventeen, in October, there was a resignation. Um, so in October, they were actually at ten members. And in February of twenty eighteen, um, zoning administrator Garrity had brought up to the county commissions, um, that they must be an odd number. Um, and he informed them there was one current open position from the resignation. Um, he also alerted there were three coming up for renewal in March, or April, I guess it would be. So in the March of twenty eighteen meeting, um, there was no motion made to move the planning commission from eleven to nine. Uh, but they did only appoint two members, which essentially put the zoning board at nine. So there was seven at-large members, two county commissioners. So I did input the ordinance in, um, section seventeen oh five that says we have to have at least one county commissioner, and we have to have an odd number on the planning commission. Those are the two requirements. And then a third of them need to be up for renewal, um, each year. So we have three-year terms, and state law aligns with that. So the very bottom portion says we currently have nine members. In twenty twenty one, Dennis Michael and Zane Williams are up for, uh, their spots are open. Uh, in twenty twenty two, Chris Barkle, Christie Schultz, and we have an open position because of the resignation. And in twenty twenty three, we have Paul Harns and Doug Headley. So currently, we have Dan and Joe as part of the planning commission. So the discussion tonight is whether we want to move from nine to seven. And by doing that, uh, there would only be one county commissioner on there. So essentially, there would be six at-large appointed members, two of each year, and one county commissioner. So I will seat the floor if anyone else would like to discuss that, uh, proposal.
Sherry?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you wanna reduce them, but you said that at one time there were eleven and thirteen and nine, you need an odd number. Um, I, I remember, uh, the one individual, I think it was Mr. Moose or Moose, that got a job with the government, and he wasn't able to, uh, attend, and, and, uh, you know, people get sick, uh, people go in the hospital, uh, um, instead of re- keeping, reducing it, maybe we should increase it to get it to back up to an odd number. Uh, you know, you get, you get down there so low, and if you get, uh, lopsided with the, with the, you know, with two or three that, uh, you know, wanna run the place, uh, you know, I think it'd be better to go up instead of down. Because he, like you said, he wrote eleven or thirteen at one time. That's my suggestion to add instead of subtract.
I like the idea of moving it down to seven, because I think it's far more efficient. I recognize, uh, what Gary just mentioned as being, uh, a possible problem. vacations added to that list there, I'm sure. I guess, I guess my thought is, uh, was to make the uh, commissioner not voting member.
You know, Don, I'm not sure if we can do that, because state law requires a county commissioner to sit on the board. So I don't know if we can make them a non-voting member.
Well, they, they have the opportunity to vote anything up or down when it comes to.
At the Board of Adjustment, yeah, because.
At the Board of Adjustment.
So essentially, we have two who get to vote twice at the planning commission and one at, uh, Board of Adjustment level, but I'm not sure state law would allow us to prevent them from voting.
Well, I mean, it definitely requires at least one member, and I would say, it doesn't specifically say voting number, but I, I would assume if we looked into it, that it would be a voting number. It's not an advisory position.
Yes, because otherwise you just can't even number the voting, and you could have a tough, impossible time.
Instead of reducing, if your representation from the community, from the county, you wouldn't go to seven, you'd go to eight. No, well, no, you're saying you would continue to have seven members of the community and with one commissioner that are not voting, so you'd still have a seven voting.
Like, what happens if two of them?
What happens?
Well, it, it, you know, that, that is something, I guess I don't, what other board could be, people sit on where they don't vote?
Right, right. I sit on a conservation, I go to the conservation meetings, I'm part of it, I'm an advisor, but I don't get to vote.
What's, I guess, you know, I, I don't know. So you're interested in one side of this.
So I, I think just to be on the safe side, I think we need to assume state law requires them to be a voting member.
I would think if they wasn't a voting member, they would say, one county commissioner in an advisory capacity.
Right.
I, I would assume that because they don't say that, that they are a voting member.
I guess I'd like to know what the law says.
I know what the section says, which is one, you have to have a minimum of one county commissioner on it. It doesn't say voting or not voting.
I think that, uh, possibly can help, uh, on transparency issues. I'm not thinking the commissioners are coming in and pushing their agenda. And then they're not voting, yeah. I, you know, I'm, you can weigh in maybe more depth. I, I mean, you have, if you wanted to research more, the way I read this is that they probably would need to be, the county planning commission shall consist of an odd number of members, including at least one county commissioner. And I would, I would just think the planning commission is the voting body, how I would.
And when you read that, it, it does tell you it's an odd number, which would mean you can't have eight, even if one of them's not voting. You have to have an odd number, and one of them has to be a one.
Right. You know, I've put some thought into this over the past, we've talked about it, I think, for two years now. Um, some of the points Commissioner Swenson made, I, I can get behind and I, I follow, but I'm just gonna count, these are things I've bounced back and forth, I, I'm gonna counter a couple of things. Things I have noticed, and we see it, um, I'm not trying to throw stones, go seed on the drainage commission. Uh, when we did have a thirteen-member planning commission, when I attended meetings, what I've noticed is the more people you have on that commission, the worse the attendance is. And I feel it's human nature, probably, I just know myself, if I'm sitting on a thirteen-panel, uh, commission, thirteen-member commission, and I've got something fairly minor going on at home, uh, kids, I don't know, whatever it'd be, I more have to throw in the towel for the commission and say, uh, there's twelve other members, they, they don't cover everything. Versus if, if you know that that position is important and attendance is required, um, I feel you have better attendance. And sometimes what happens, especially in the situation where now we're reviewing ordinances and things, some members aren't present, and then you spend an entire meeting catching up on people that were, that were missing. So that'd be one, I guess, argument against the larger mission. You know, one thing that I've noticed, especially in the, you know, I don't think we're gonna buckle anybody that has been in contentious times in the county, and there's one glaring issue that, that pops up, and that's the CAOs in Article Five. And, uh, it seems like more and more so as we have some turnover and some terms expiring and things like that on planning and zoning. Fewer people are applying for the overall picture of planning and zoning and to, uh, review typical applications coming for, for ordinance, and more and more so, the, the people applying are polarized on one issue. And I don't know that that's healthy for the county, I don't know that it's healthy for, for making decisions on, um, applications that are, don't fall into the Article Five category, and I think input on, on, uh, article changes from, from both sides, even, you know, the far extreme polar, is welcome, it can be, can be given, but I just see this, the, the more turnover, the people that are being placed, either growing farther and farther apart on that one issue, and I don't know if there's gonna be a, a solution if that continues.
Well, isn't it up to us, though, to choose people to apply to, it would be on us to pick, you know, we have.
And we have, I'm saying that the app, the people, the applicants themselves, I see fewer and fewer that are. I think the majority of applicants we see are there for one issue, not for the entire ordinance.
People generally get involved, you know, as, you know, I know that's why I ran for county commission, because I wanted to see change, and a lot of people talk about change, and, you know, all of us were handed for a reason, whatever that is, and I think that's what motivates people, and I think it's important that, you know, proper representation. Have we had any applicants for this position? I mean, it doesn't even close for quite a while.
We've seen, but, yeah, we've had two, two formal applications, and then one person has inquired and asked what the deadline was to change. And I did look up eleven two two, and like, like what was stated previously, it doesn't say anything about non-voting members. It just says that may a pointed commission, known as county commission, that, uh, five or more members be going, and then, uh, uh, total membership shall always have an uneven number, and at least one member shall be a member of Board of County Commission.
Gary, while you're up, your, do you, what do you see is, did I, I've talked to some other counties, and they're typically smaller counties out west, and I haven't polled any of the counties around us, to be honest. But I, I think we're an oddity at having to, so.
I believe so too, um, uh, from what I've seen, generally, there are five or seven most, in most of the state, but I, I could certainly take a poll and find that out.
Gary, is it, is it possible that to, to other counties, do they divide, defining zone members by territories? Population, is there, is that, I think now we're getting everybody swimming, and then nobody wants to.
No, I don't either.
Or somebody.
One, two, three.
No, no, I, we have to be careful of that.
On the seven, the five on the.
We, we have to be careful there. It's the same thing as the county commission. There was a push to get zones back, but you have to be evenly populated. So when we go to that scenario, part of the city of Gankton is in every zone. Unless you add everything except the city of Gankton, you have four people from the city, and everybody else gets one. So that was the caution when they went that route, and I'm pretty sure, as I was reading the zoning laws, that that is part of it. You can zone it, but it has to be as evenly populated as it can be, and that's based on your census.
And that is always a concern, plus the fact that a lot of, a lot of counties were having issues finding people in specific districts, and you know, I, in my history in the past, we've always tried to do as much of that as we could, where we got people from different townships involved, if possible, but sometimes it's not possible.
Oh, you're, you're Zane Williams, he's from Maryland, Dennis Michael, he's in beautiful north, it's, you know, I'm not sure where Chris lives, he live out west of town?
Yeah.
Christie Schultz lives in, you know.
She's in that, she's in that part.
Well, I mean, but, uh, most of what we do, Don, and you know this because you were on the board, doesn't deal with that. A lot of stuff out of the way period, and we have, you know, not everything that we deal with it, deals with. And I can understand, you know, say, the drainage commission, wow, well, that is, I mean, that, but not really very few of the things that we do deal with are hard with that, and, and I think we need to be careful about not having a proper representation at the board. Really, that's up for us to determine that. Um, my personal feeling, and, and if you go back even further, um, when zoning was adopted, when we went from temporary zoning to permanent, it was at nine, and then it expanded to go to thirteen, and that was, uh, you know, because there were some significant rewrites to the zoning ordinance, a lot of changes happened. Board of Adjustment was adopted. I, I myself, when I served with you, Don, the word was thirteen. Um, nobody, I think, is talking about going back up to thirteen, but, uh, really, uh, you know, nine or eleven is personally where I feel we need to be. This is a good opportunity for the citizens of Gankton County to get involved with our community. There aren't a lot of options where somebody can volunteer their time, you know, to help our community. This is one of them. We've never had a lack of applicants for this. We've always had more applicants than we have positions, and it's up to us to choose the people that, you know, we want. Um, and, you know, so, I guess, uh, and then as far, do, do we have somebody in mind, the county commissioner, that, um, wanted to maintain on there?
Well, obviously, it's you and I are on there, um, and I, you know, I've talked to you so much in the past, through this, you know, if we ever did leave a product, ever did drop to one, um, I would probably leave it up to you, but I personally, I, I feel on planning and zoning, you do a better job than I do at tasking, but I, I really do, you, you ask more pertinent questions, um. It's not something that I'm probably the most comfortable in.
Well, you, you do a very good job.
It's, uh, it's a, I mean, it's a difficult position, there's no, no doubt about it.
Well, Don, would you be willing to serve with me again? You have a lot of experience and, and knowledge, and, uh, I, I feel as county commissioners, we, we kind of provide a little bit of leadership to, you know, the board, and I think that's really important, maybe, you know, now more than ever, or Sherry, or, or Gary, uh, I feel it's important for the planning commission to, to have that guy. to have that guidance. Uh, and and it's, you know, it's important for a lot of the projects. It's important for economic growth. I think it's a
The answer would be yes. But again, I I still think it's a really good
It's, it's always good. You know, when when you have the tough issues, it's, it's, it's tough, but you know, when, when when we're dealing with the other issues, um, you know, for example, these rezones and stuff, it's very cogent. I mean, people have their, you know, when you get, I'm gonna be honest, when you get the technical issue, there's a disagreement, but there's a disagreement throughout the community. But if you took that issue, if you took that one issue out, I I mean, I would say a huge majority of the time, we would all vote in consensus. You know, we had a rezone project uh, you know, out on the planning commission, very cogent discussions. There's different sides, but I think it's important that one side brings up their concern and another side brings up that concern. And you have a spirit of discussion, debate, and you work out the issues. I feel that's a big difference.
Well, my, my thought is, is like, yeah, the CAOs is, is better than the vice. Guarantee that that's phase one. The same people that are against CAOs are gonna be against spring. Then they're gonna be against dust, regardless. You're gonna be on Ben, Ben Wagon, stop everything.
Well, I guess that's why us as county commissioners are in that position to guide that. I I guess I don't see, I don't see that as happening. I've never, I've actually never heard anybody come to this room complain about dust and spraying. I I can't recall that.
I do.
There's a lot of scary issues in the dust.
So, you know, on the end, I guess I'll just hang on in the end here. I'm a pretty big proponent for seven. And the reason why is it gives you two members each year that are up, so it's even. And you have very, very little swing in the makeup of a planning commission. Uh, I feel strongly that only one county commissioner should serve on this board for the sheer reason that I don't think two of us should get to vote twice. Um, we have our chance to vote. It's Board of Adjustment. And I feel it's more fair to the applicants going for for the planning commission if there's only one county commissioner who gets to vote again. Because essentially, after that meeting, they know forty percent of the vote at the Board of Adjustment. And that seems very redundant to me. And I know government is awful redundant, but I think it's an opportunity for us to some degree to minimize the county commission's influence on the planning commission because we are appointing those folks to read these documents, interpret them, and make a decision as a recommendation to us. So by us being on that planning commission, we are influencing a vote before it even gets to the Board of Adjustment. So I feel pretty strongly that at the end of the day, we should only have one county commissioner on that board. And I have, I have had the opportunity to sit on a lot of different boards over my lifetime, if you will. And I remember distinctly as a young, wet behind the ear employee, and my boss took me to some of those meetings. And he said, Ducksbury, just sit and watch, because that was my maiden name. And he always called me by my last name. He said, just sit and watch the dynamics. And when he would watch the dynamics of very large meetings versus very small meetings, there was a huge difference in the accomplishments at the end of the day. And I agree a hundred percent that we are in control of who is sitting on that board. But that means we need to be picking people very, um, prudently and people who will express their thoughts. And again, having watched those meetings, a meeting of fifteen people versus five, in that meeting of fifteen people, there were five people speaking. In that meeting of five people, there were five people speaking. Because what it ends up is you have strong personalities on large boards, and they have a tendency to dominate the conversation unless you have someone in charge who is forcing them to speak. When they really would rather just let the person sitting next to them speak. So that's my experience working on different sized boards. And and that's why my, um, my vote is to go to seven, two up every year, one county commissioner. And I think we can still achieve very good representation across our county. We have five people on the county commission. If the state fell, we weren't representing our county very well, we'd have a Board of Nine County Commissioners. Could you imagine having a Board of Nine County Commissioners to have the discussions we have? So that's, that's my opinion. Again, I'll, I'll step back and um, at this, at this point, we can discuss further, or we can take action tonight, um, or we can decide not to ever take action.
I I guess, you know, last meeting, we had a discussion on the future drainage ordinance. And we, you, Sharon, made sure that the drainage ordinance was a part of that. And I think that was a good thing. And maybe we should do the same thing here. Maybe we should get the planning commission's input on that and and you know, have this at the, the next meeting. You know, it'd be the same thing, the exact same thing we're doing with the drainage commission right now. And we, we all agreed that we'd have that drainage commission say on, on the future of that. And I, I think it's just as fair to do that with the planning commission.
I don't fully disagree with that. I just, it's not apples to apples. Because what's, what's this was brought up for the drainage commission was disbanding the drainage.
Well, repealing the, although ordinance, well, that was one of the options that was continue, repeal, or modify. I I agree, it's, it's, you know, but it is similar because there could be big changes to the drainage condition, which is a Board of Nine. And this board, which is a Board of Nine, and I for one would at least want to hear what the planning commission has to say.
Can I get a word in?
Sure, Gary, go ahead.
Um, I've had, I've had several individuals, you know, mentioned over the last years. Um, you've got two county commissioners on a planning and zoning committee. And like you said, they get to vote twice. And I know a lot of people have said, well, that doesn't really seem fair. They get to vote twice and you and the other two commissioners get to vote once. Then going back to the person with a strong personality on a larger group, uh, if you cut your commissioners down to one, I would think it'd be more advantageous to have two county commissioners so that you can enforce that uh, person to stand down with that strong personality. So you can let the other people that are maybe a little more timid and and not experienced in speeches be able to talk so much. And I'm still in favor of upping from seven to nine because with the same problem. You have people missing, you have people in the hospital, you have, you have now this COVID thing. Uh, you don't know what's gonna happen next year. Uh, two floods last year and COVID this year, twenty twenty-one might be worse. So we don't know. Uh, we hope not. But uh, I'm still in favor of nine. I'm still in favor of having two commissioners. And then if you don't want the two commissioners to vote twice, then you make those two commissioners abstain when they vote. So that they've already got a vote on the planning commission and then they can't vote during the, the, there's still three, so that is still a quorum. So, so think about that. And I don't think we should vote on anything tonight because uh, uh, there's, 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 there's too many loose ends here and too many questions yet. And uh, but I'm in definitely in favor with like Dan is to keep it up to nine. And uh, and uh, if if we can somehow work it out, that the the commissioners have two of them with the planning and zoning, they can vote then, and then they abstain when it comes to later on, when we approve it. Um, that seems more fair instead of two commissioners always getting two votes. And like you said, then they, they influence, uh, the influence or, you know, one way or the other. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
I want to tee off quick about some of your comments, Sherry. And and one thing, when, when we were here, uh, what, two years ago now? Um, some of the planning meetings I went to and and things, some of the people I did talk with were shocked that we had two commissioners on, on planning and zoning. They were pretty surprised. For some of the similar reasons, they had one, they had the two votes and and forty percent of that decision at the county level was already made. And two, I I do agree, I think what I've noticed, and not just me sitting on there, but even before I was at this seat and watched, commissioners sitting on, county commissioners sitting on the planning and zoning, um, have a lot of influence. And I think a lot of planning and zoning members maybe just instinctively kind of look to them as guidance or or more of an authority in in what's decided or or how to interpret things. And um, and I try to, it's difficult sometimes, but I try to kind of sit back and and offer input, but not not control meetings or or say, no, this is how it is. Because I've got clients saying that. It's just natural tendency. I I do see that happen. I will agree. Again, I mean, I I think there's arguments to be said about going to nine. There's arguments that should be said about going to eleven. And and they're not, they're not all wrong. I've said for two years, though, that I I do think you get more participation out of a smaller group than than a larger group.
Are you finished?
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, I just, I just want to put something down for the record. And and I would like to have Patty put this in the record. Uh, I've been a county commissioner now almost four years. And I have never been on a planning and zoning commission, never. I wasn't, I was denied that right or that privilege two years before when Woods, Bowdenstadt, and Epp were on and done. And the two years now, I've been denied that too. So I've never been on a planning and zoning commission. All four of you have. So, um, tell me how fair that is to the people. That they don't get to hear my voice. Of course, you know, and I want that written in the record, that that I've never been on a planning and zoning commission because I've been denied that. Thank you.
Gary, I've never been on either.
Yeah, but you've only, you've only, you've only been here two years and I've been here four.
Well, Sherry, would you be interested in serving on the planning commission since you, you haven't had that opportunity?
No, I've never, I've never been.
No, I said, Sherry, Sherry.
Well, I feel strongly that only one should be on, so. And if Joe was willing to step down, then he would be our representative on the planning commission.
You know, I guess if you look at our history for when zoning was adopted in two thousand three, and ever since, there has been two county commissioners. I mean, we're going on, you know, quite close to twenty years. It's worked pretty well. And, you know, rolling up in Yankton here, you know, we're not the same as some other communities. And uh, you know, I guess, I, I think it works for us. Um, you know, and and Don, you said you would serve on the planning commission. Gary offered to do it as well. I think if somebody else wants the opportunity, I think we should at least discuss that and
Well, we, we usually have that discussion in, on the first meeting in January.
Well, could we, could we just finish out the term or do we not want to do that? And then we can have this discussion in January? I mean, I hate, I hate to push somebody out before their term is over.
Well, but the other thing is we have an open position. And that's the point, is we have an open position. And now, if we are going to seven, this is the prime opportunity to do that because it leaves us with two current members up every two years. It's all aligned to be seven, and we wouldn't have to shorten terms or lengthen terms or anything like that. It's, it's clean.
If we were to, if we were to just push this conversation out, then somebody's, and let's say we pushed it out and we decided to go to seven at the, in March, then uh, there's two positions up, so we can only fill one of those. And then we have, I mean, it's not like anything can't be undone, but it's just jostling. It's clean, right now, it's clean.
We could put this open term to end, uh, you know, January first of this year. And uh, we, you know, we, elections are a funny thing. We have no idea who's gonna be sitting in those two chairs on January first. We'll know in a few weeks. But this is a big decision and people who are gonna be here for the season, we can, we can appoint that open spot to fill out the remainder and observe our terms and discuss them in January. That's another option. That's a compromise there.
So I had made my position known. If uh, if anybody else wants to, Dan has made his position known. If anybody else wants to, and Gary, I guess, has to as well. So Joe and Don, if you want to make your position known, or we make a motion and act, or we essentially do nothing.
And I would personally, again, like you say, I I would like the planning commission to put, you know, just like we're getting drainage commissions, I, I, I think it's appropriate to ask the planning commission better thoughts.
What do we do with the open position?
And we, we fill it and fill it till position is January first. And then, January first, we discuss again. Because then that position will be open again too. And whoever applies for that, they'll know that that will be in until beginning of January. It's possibly subject to Now, I guess I feel community representation, you know, we, we also, you know, we say, and I believe all this, believe in this. We all want input, you know, this is an opportunity for people to get involved in anything.
Sherry, that's true. My, uh, opinion, I could, I can support a mission of seven people with one voting commissioner. And my thought was that if we have one voting commissioner, whether it's ordinance changes or whatnot, it would be just a position open for, for ex officio commissioner to partake in the meeting or for as a non-voting member to you know, something about, comment about representation to end. And I, and you, on a grand scheme, the more positions open, the more representation we have. It seems like that would make be a, a general statement that makes sense, but I don't, I don't see that as being our situation today. I see the more positions that we have, or even the more uh, turnover in positions that we fill, where I think we silence, I think we currently have a, a board that semi-polarized. I think there's some, some big polarities and I think there is some common ground in that too. I think as we have turnover and have to appoint people, we silence, we lose representation of what and you said it before, our, it's, it's pretty rare when we have an application or anything that involves a CAO. It really is. And in the number one interest of people applying and that have been for the past year and a half or since last year, it it's been driven by, we want input, we want to be part of changing Article Five. And I, I I don't want to silence people in that manner. And I, I think it's, it is a hot topic issue. People do want that input. a hot topic issue, people do want that input. Um, but for the overall planning and zoning board, I think what's happening is we're silencing what planning and zoning is there to do day in and day out. This is kind of a, uh, all in a special piece, um, part of that group and I, so far as the representation, I think we certainly can have representation and do have representation of seven members myself. I, I make a motion that we vote for the open position, we make that six appointed members with one county official.
Who's the founding commissioner?
And I, uh, we, that, like I said, I leave you, if you feel like I'm failing or anything, I'll certainly stick it out too. Well, there'd be nothing wrong with you sticking it out till the end of the year.
You can be the indicer.
When the, uh, sure.
Not official.
Well, but, but I mean, I'm just wondering how that works with, you know, do you, are you in the discussion and then you just, you just go vote? How does that, I'm, I'm wondering how that, how that works or if it's, if it's better to just rip the band-aid off and we're gonna go to one, go to one, I, I don't...
I would probably...
I guess, I guess where I would see it going is when we are doing these amendment changes, when those are being discussed, there's four commissioners who can represent the county commission there as an extra voice. Joe can fill that position, I can fill it, Don can fill it and Gary can fill it. It gives one of us the opportunity to attend one of those meetings, but absolutely should not be part of the discussion on CUPs, variances, rezones, et cetera. Our opportunity is the board of adjustments. So I have a motion on the table to, uh, close the open position, leave the appointed members at six with one county commissioner. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second. So I have a motion and second on the table, further discussion.
So who, so Joe, you're gonna, for all intents and purposes, step, step down then?
I'm gonna step aside.
Now, how does this work with our liaison ship with the planning and zoning office? Then, then I'm gonna take over that solely? Which would kind of, in my opinion, make more sense if I'm doing that? Or would you still be doing the liaison? And that's something that's, that's, you know, what we call in common search is second and third order effect, so are you gonna then?
You know, right now, right now, we consider the highway department a pretty big area, so Don and I share that duty. If, if zoning right now is a pretty hot topic in our county, if we build two commissioners or warranted, certainly that's appropriate.
I mean, you bring up a good point, when we have highway issues and highway meetings, there's two county commissioners there and...
Not all the time.
Essentially forty percent of, well, they'll have a meeting, forty percent of the board at the highway meetings and discussions are already there, so it's, it's really the same thing that we're talking about in planning as well.
But the difference is, Don and I have no official capacity to vote on anything when we talk to my...
But you get the plan and you get the public input from people and then you take their plan, help create forward, um, which, you know, we did, which, you know, I don't have a problem with that, with both of you do that, but it's, it's the same thing here as we have two commissioners on the highway department and basically forty percent of the vote is really for all practical purposes decided. It's, it's really the same, same argument and we're okay with that, but we're not okay with that in planning and zoning. And my second point is, I really feel that we should at least give the planning commission an opportunity to give us input on the side of that, that's, that's only fair.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table. So at this point, we will do a roll call vote and I'll restate the motion was essentially to close the open position, move to six appointed members and one county commissioner, and we've decided that will be Dan.
Are you prepared for that?
Yes.
Did I just set out?
If there's any controversial ones on...
Yeah?
I said, yeah, I stepped out before the...
So at this point, we will do a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Dan?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
So we are now at seven members on the planning commission. We are not going to fill the open position, so let those folks know, and I don't know if we need to probably publish that we're no longer taking, um, applications.
It's open until...
You, you can, when you let them know where it won't, what would that next year is?
Oh, in, um, April.
Yeah, and I generally do that.
Yep. So, um, at, at this point, item number twenty-four is done. We have item twenty-four A, which was the conservation discussion. Dan, did you want to lead this one?
Yeah, I just, again, um, we have an opening, I think we have to do our due diligence as county commissioners, extra dollars to see if that position has changed and if it needs different requirements, or if we can consolidate that maybe with another position. And I don't, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna work, but I think we should look into it. Now is kind of difficult.
I guess I want to, um, just say, um, the conservation board has always chosen, you know, it was never chosen by this board.
True.
It was always chosen in party.
You know, the conservation board, the, the conservation board has always hired someone that we pay for.
I, yeah, they choose, they pay for it. We just say, we're gonna pay for a salary and they hire.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, I don't know if you asked around then in your James River Water District or not, but I did have Mr. Bender inquire, Beetle in Brown County gives zero, zero dollars to conservation. Um, Davison and Brookings have twenty-five thousand flat that they just give their conservation district. Um, so I did look up the budget historical that we spend, and in twenty thirteen, we started at thirty-two thousand, thirty-nine, forty-seven, fifty, forty-eight, fifty-three, fifty-one, and twenty-twenty is proposed at fifty-seven. So in twenty thirteen, we were at thirty-two thousand and, um, the budget this year is proposing for, uh, fifty-seven.
And that's what, no, fifty-two.
Uh, yeah, that includes benefits and everything.
It's full time.
And that includes our five thousand for trees, so if you pulled, I doubt if anybody has their budget, uh, books with them, but if you pulled that, so it'd be salary and then five thousand for the trees.
Yeah, that's, that's all we've got, so...
That's, that's all in that amount. So the amount is getting more each year and, and we do need to decide if that's the route we want to take. And we probably need to do it prudently because I know they were trying to fill that position before the end of October.
They kind of bet they want it done before the third of November.
So...
Sherry, you're the liaison, is that correct?
I do, I, I asked to, um, stick around there, um, I go to their, uh, board meetings probably every other month.
Yeah, you know, I guess my recommendation would be, uh, call the board and, and get their opinion on...
Well, I can tell you their opinion's going to be, please hire someone for us. So I think it really comes to the philosophical discussion at the county commission and what's, do we want to proceed down this path that we have proceeded? Or do we want to change directions? So I guarantee you, every one of those board members would say, please, please, give us somebody.
They have all any board members?
Um, I know they've got an open position, they've got four right now and they had an open position because no one will run. It's an elected board, it's in statute, um, so if anybody, and I think they have districts maybe, but I'm, I'm sure really, Don, how about that?
You looking to jolt down?
Yeah, another, another board?
Yeah. I, I just want to say, I think conservation is super important and, and I'm fine with we hiring this person, but you know, maybe it's something we could discuss with their board, if can this person go, you know, part-time? I know there are a lot of people who are looking for part-time, um, other options we could maybe look at, could this be, you know, combined with, you know, another position? Forage comes to mind, is that an option? I think, you know, there are similar duties, I know, but it's, it's the conversation we should do, should have.
Well, I will certainly call, uh, one of the board members and mention this discussion, um, would someone want to follow up with? I mean, if we're looking at trying to transfer duties to a whole nother department, that's another ballgame because that's really understanding what those departments currently do. And I know very little about forage and extensions, so someone else would have to volunteer to follow up on that avenue. Dan, would you want to do that?
Who's the liaison?
Gary.
I think it's Commissioner Swenson.
Do you want to work with Gary on, on to these liaisons and your liaison for those two? Cause I, I, to tell you the truth, I, I haven't, uh, followed up much with the extension of forage, if you're going, uh, since they're not, you know, my son being...
I haven't either.
I mean, I guess Gary, Gary probably be the one to talk to and, and appoint them to that position.
Gary, are you okay with that? So the counties that do nothing or give nothing, there's no obligation to do so?
No, it is, um, if you read the laws around those, and I thought I, I didn't bring those with me, um, we can, uh, support them, but we are not statutorily required to. So how the other counties do conservation districts, I have no idea, if they just get volunteers to do all of their work or what? I, do you know anything about Brown that you can share, Gary?
Yeah, I think that's basically where I'm at, I'm up there anyway.
Okay. All right, any other comments on that one? We are now at public comment and we're only an hour behind, not bad. But anyone here for public comment?
Sherry.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, Sherry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to have a public...
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, the public comment, I just wanted to elaborate a little more on the veterans. Uh, there was one other thing that I wanted to, uh, express, uh, you know, back in about two thousand one, nine eleven, uh, we started hearing, uh, thank you for your service and, and I'm, I'm sure that the person or people, whoever coined the phrase, thank you for your service, uh, but it's, it's kind of like, uh, thank you for shopping at Kmart, thank you for shopping at Walmart, you know, thank you for buying gas here. Um, I, I'll tell you a little secret, I'll let you in on a little secret. Uh, from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen seventy-five, the Vietnam era, um, we didn't get a thank you for coming home. As a matter of fact, a lot of nasty things happened, but I don't want to go over that. With veterans, when we talk to each other from that era, fifty-nine to seventy-five, this is a secret, I'll let you in on. You know what we say to each other? Welcome home. Welcome home, brother, or welcome home, sister. Cause there was almost eight thousand nurses in Vietnam from that time, fifty-nine to seventy-five, and, and some were killed. Anyway, especially on the, uh, Operation Baby Lift when they, uh, nineteen seventy-five, when they, they took all the Amur Asian children, orphans, and flew them to the United States. And of course, the government dropped the ball on that deal and, and wouldn't fund anything, but there were actually people that, that demurged their homes so they could rent planes to get those orphans home, orphans home. And one of those orphans ended up in South Dakota. And, uh, you'd like to know some information on that, that got, I actually, uh, communicated with her, she's all grown up now. She went to an adopted family. But the welcome home thing is a little secret, I'm telling you. Um, like I said, our home is, is Veterans Day every day and, uh, next time you see a vet and say, instead of saying, uh, thank you for your service, uh, if you see that he's an old geezer like me from the Vietnam area, um, tell him welcome home, would you? Cause it, it means a lot. Um, cause like I said, uh, I don't know, they didn't like us, and I think some of us still, some of them don't like us yet. But anyway, welcome home. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary. Would anyone else care to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed, it's time for commissioner updates. Anyone want to start?
Uh, thanks for your welcome, I'm having a little trouble having it right now. Go ahead.
Sure, sure, I got a couple things, uh, first off, I'd say there's some NACO training coming up tomorrow, um, it's free, all you have to do is register, I didn't give you any send that out yet. Second off, uh, talking was, uh, new Gary, uh, the flyover that we're doing, uh, we're gonna begin that here fairly soon, or not. And I guess wanting some guidance from the board for the planning department, um, there's an expectation we're gonna find violations, we always do. And so what do we want the process to look like? Do we want to just send them a letter and tell them, be on compliance? Do we want to find them as, and done in the past? Um, what was that fine gonna be? And ultimately, um, I guess how far do we want to take this? And so we, we would like some guidance from the board on what we want to see with these, you know, flyovers and, and then how, you know, that's what we want to do with it.
Do you think, do you want to have the discussion, right?
No, no, that's, we can do that at the next meeting or something.
Is that on the agenda for next time? Is that only enough?
We can certainly do that, yes. Did that cover kind of what we discussed then? Did you have anything you wanted?
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, the process, like you said, it's always been that we do the five hundred dollar post-construction fee plus the building permit things, but as we know, a couple months ago, we had somebody come in trying to dispute that and, and so we know that basically, we want to make sure that upfront that we're, this is the process we're gonna use, we're gonna assume that that'll be, that'll be the process and, and people won't be able to negotiate what those fees are, that's the bottom line.
And if everybody's okay, I'll work with Gary now, whether you can get a process and we'll bring it forward here. And what we'd like to see is, give us your input, but once we establish that process, I think it's best to treat everybody the same and, and evidently, and Don, you know, this, you've got a good group of people who didn't know about it and, and don't want to pay the fine and, and really that's kind of, I think where we're trying to get the guidance, so we're gonna, we're gonna stick to our guns and what are we gonna do? So if that's okay with everybody, I'll give you something, uh, we're gonna next week.
I think that's all, fine, because they'd always have true petition to appeal, that's a city.
Yeah, and, and you know, yeah, let's... Uh, second off, uh, I have, um, I'm getting awarded one of those quips of that one and I wanted to know if any of the board had an issue if I, if it nasty enough, and I would want to know if the board had an issue about that, uh, with the two million, or just a small...
Okay.
There'll be some weekend, I just want to make sure. Um, the last thing I had is I know that, uh, when we had, uh, appreciated the work the ambulance task force did, we, uh, we had discussed, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, talking to our state legislators about trying to impose, you know, uh, an ability for the county to assess for the ambulance. Okay. Um, the time to probably start talking to legislators is coming up on that. I, um, if I would have thought about it earlier, we should have brought a resolution to the State Commission Association, I didn't think about it till afterwards. But I, I think if, if that was one of our tasks to do, I know it was one of the many we should be reaching out to our legislators and see if we can have one of them be willing to propose that. We really should propose that.
I've already, I've already talked to Gene Hunhun and Ryan Schwab's aware of it, but he's not responded yet. So Gene's asking around at the state level why it's written today what the way it is.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, sorry. Maybe one of the members of, of our task force, of the state task force, and that's, I believe he's driving from that.
And you know, I, I think we all realize it's. It's part of the Vietnam, uh, your approach.
Yep.
So next year. We, we could propose that resolution maybe to our county association and then if we go a bit more. Hold on that, we send a resolution there. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's easy with everything we have to, you know, put things on the back.
Gene was wondering why it was written away with the.
And it's really tough because not a lot of counties have it.
But there's gonna be.
Very few.
So it's gonna be difficult, you know, if, if they can't get a, if they can't get a resolution to pass the building.
Do you have anything, Joe, or are you still thinking? Don, do you have any updates?
I don't think I gave them last time.
Gary, did you have any updates tonight?
Uh, no, I just, about every two weeks, I, I have a conference call with Washington DC, you know, after I went to. DC last year in September and uh, it's, it's the basic thing right now, it's still the COVID nineteen and, and they're just really working hard on a, on a vaccine and uh. Just, uh, they're doing everything they can, uh, you know, this is, came from China and, and uh, just uh. China's, China's not our friend, so anyway, uh, but they're, they're working on the, on the. The new vaccine and everything as hard as they can. If, if I find out something, I get sometimes a briefing or an email. On an update and I'll, I'll share it with everybody if, if they've discovered something that I know they had some testing and. And some of it, uh, some of the people got sick, but uh, that kinda goes with the, with the, when you're a volunteer, so. Anyway, I'll keep you informed as much as I can.
All right, thank you. Um, so uh. Jeff got a quote to put permanent um glass on the four counters and it's about sixteen thousand dollars. If you wanna upgrade to bulletproof. That's just a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot.
Just the hall roof's office.
And the other thing about that one is it's so heavy, we would probably have to replace the counters because of the weight. So, and that certainly is not covered by any COVID dollars, so. This is about where we stand and I'm sure there will be a question as to how much is reimbursed through the CARES dollars because we have a temporary one in place now. And they're being so hippie about what they will and won't continue to upgrade and things, so um, that's what that. Uh, salary matrix, so Joe and Don. Meeting tomorrow at nine thirty with all the department heads so they can explain to you their proposal.
Public safety.
At the safety center, so go in by the state's attorney's office and there will be a room straight ahead. Um, so that's coming up and I was looking to schedule you, Dan, for November fourth at nine thirty. Right now, so check your calendar on that, please. Uh, Tuesday, we, pardon, nine thirty. Tuesday, we have a drainage ordinance meeting and I think the only thing on the topic is to discuss the future of the drainage ordinance. I already mentioned the CARES Act dollars that we are begging and pleading about our ambulance reimbursement. Um, and then Monday night, I believe we have all been invited to a forum. At the archery center at seven o'clock. And so I'm assuming, Don, you're going to be there.
Yep.
And Joe, are you planning?
I think so, I think so.
You think so? Joe, Dan?
I believe they had a remote option.
It's still, yeah, so, and then I'll, I've committed to it as well, so. I need to get Val in the information so she can get that published in a paper, there, there will be a forum. Oh, okay.
Trudy, can you tell me where that meeting is located at? Exactly.
I believe it's still, it's gonna be over at the safety center.
Public Safety Center again, but I'll, I'll send out a notice.
When is that?
For November fourth.
November.
Just Dan.
November fourth is for the.
Well, we won't be here, no. Absentee.
Oh, okay.
Handing or anything?
We should.
Okay. Well, then we, we'll have it here then.
I would like to meet you other than the other day, but you're gonna have a long night, Patty. I think, you know, for the honor of your sake, let's move it to another time. Just cause the day after the election is. She could be. Potential to be your late side. I'll tell you what, Patty, if you could get with Gary, just let me know what we're.
That works.
Well, it's gonna be all the department heads, so we have to coordinate with all the department heads.
Yeah, I know, and, and just, I, I feel what the. The honor of your sake, that, that's.
How about Monday, the night?
That'd be fine.
Just let me.
Cause Veterans Day is on the Wednesday, so.
And what time was that, Martin? October twenty-sixth, right? Yep, at seven PM. At the room, at the archery center, and the planning commission is invited to. I don't know how many of them are planning to be there. And I think that's all I have.
I got one, something to add.
Got one?
Probably uh, the majority of the people, or a number of people will have voted by next election day. But I would encourage everybody to get out, vote for your candidate, your choice. It's very important. All aspects. Of county government.
State national, yep, it's a big ticket. So, all right, yeah. Don't work that way, so.
So, it's definitely. Not in California today, it's, it burned out by stuff.
How are you doing? I mean, are you, you have enough support and everything? Uh, is there anything?
We saw from the attorney's office comes over, which depends. The last week is been. Well. Items for next meeting. We need to schedule the last meeting of the year, Patty's already got that down, we need to discuss uh fines. For constructing without permits, so that'll be Mr. Better. Anything else that needs to be on the next agenda? All righty, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second to adjourn for the discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now adjourned.